Ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and whereas the Dr. King Holiday and Service Act enacted in nineteen ninety-four, designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service and charged the Corporation, the Cooperation for National and Community Service with leading this effort. And whereas since nineteen ninety-four, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King to serve as neighbors in communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the Dr. King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas Dr. King Day of Service projects are being organized by a wide range of nonprofit and community organizations, educational institutions, public agencies, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens. And whereas citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, have the opportunity to participate in events throughout our city on the King Day of Service, as well as create and implement community service projects where they identify the need. Now therefore, I, Jim Benage, Mayor of Bel Air, proclaim January twentieth, twenty twenty-five as Martin Luther King Junior Day and a Day of Service in Bel Air and call upon people of our city to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Junior Day and throughout the year. And I've signed this proclamation today. And I hope everyone will honor memory of Dr. Martin Luther King. Move on to determine agenda additions. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Hearing now, and move on to consent agenda. So this only concludes minutes of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmitz. All payers say aye.
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 All any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Discussion approval appropriations ordinance, so this appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses for the December eleventh through December thirty-first and one payroll cycle. Expenditures amount to one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Other reported expenses, six hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars are infrastructure costs for new developments, and these costs are paid through special assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All payers say aye.
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 All same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Move on to city requested appearances. We have Mr. Aaron Maxwell, Bella Chamber of Commerce, to give us an update. I was a little confused, though. You were you going to do this, or is Mr. Dean going to do this?
The way it fell is he'll take over tomorrow.
Oh, he takes over tomorrow.
This is the last time you all see me.
Okay.
So tomorrow will be great. This is Greg Dane. He's going to be our incoming president, and tomorrow's will be our first meeting of the year, so he'll take over.
Okay, very good.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, then. So this will be our end of year twenty twenty-four report for the Bel Air Chamber. We finished the year with thirty-five members. Our current bank account balance is five thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. We still are needing a secretary and a vice president to sit on the board for this upcoming year. The next meetings we have, January, actually Greg's going to be speaking tomorrow at our meeting. He's with the Dane Agency, and he has a talk that he's going to give called How to Live Healthy to Be a Hundred. Is that correct? All right. February, our meeting, we have Brandon Ivy, who was on the Discovery Channel series Storm Chasers. He's going to come and talk to the businesses about storm preparation, and then hopefully show us some cool tornado footage that he's captured over the years. And then in March, we have Renee Boggs to come speak. She's with Kansas Gas Company. She's their new communications person over there. She's going to come talk about what they're doing to keep up with growth in communities like Bel Air. All right, so to kind of recap the year, we got off to a pretty good start last year, and then we kind of stalled out, honestly, in the middle of the summer. Memberships were down the second half of the year. Participation in the meetings was down a little bit. We still have the two open board seats that we haven't been able to fill yet. So like I said, we had, we felt like we had a lot of momentum going into last year, and then about halfway through the year, it kind of faded. So our plan to kind of increase membership and revenue from our side of things in twenty twenty-five, we're going to be sending letters out to all the vendors. Ted provided us with a list of all the vendors for the city. We're going to reach out to them and ask them to become members of the chamber. We've got some postcards that we're going to send out to all the businesses in the area, not just Bel Air, but within a couple miles of the city as well. Last year, Gary and I went out separately a couple times knocking on doors. Greg and I'll do the same this year, trying to connect with the new businesses that have opened in the area. Last year, we put a lot of focus on our Facebook presence. Kind of mixed feedback on some of that. One thing we're going to do this year is we're going to increase our presence on LinkedIn, which is where more businesses in the area hopefully will interact with us. We're going to try to get some different speakers in this year. We've got a couple new businesses in the area that we're going to try to tour this year. And then I talked with Nick a couple weeks ago on the phone, and I plan on following up with him later this month to make sure that we're communicating well with the city and making sure that we're a good resource to get the city's information out to the business community. I think we've probably been a little bit laxed in communicating city business with our members, so we're going to try to increase that this year. So that's our game plan. And then on the financial side of things from last year, we did get the fifteen thousand dollars from the city. We'd like to go ahead and request that again, the same amount this year. And then the revenue that we generated last year in memberships, we generated thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars in member revenue and seventy-one hundred and twenty-five dollars in sponsorship revenue for a total of ten thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, which was down three hundred from twenty twenty-three. And then the three big events that we've, that we put on every year along with the city, we spent six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars on the Spring Festival, five thousand, nine hundred and one dollars on the Fall Festival, and then the holiday or Christmas in Bel Air, we spent one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for a total of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's not including hours for Kim, who's our executive director. Yeah, I think that's it. Anybody have any questions about all of that? All right, well, thank you again. I mean, it's been a pleasure serving as the chamber president this last year, and I'll be here around as past president next year to help support Greg and everybody else. So thank you all very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the citizens' concerns, and do we have any citizens here that wish to speak to council? Did we get any citizen cards? Okay. Hearing now, move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. On December nineteenth, I attended the CCU meeting. The big item there is discussing financing options for the plan expansion. So we didn't take any official action, but received some good information about things like if we went with the state revolving fund, it might be a better interest rate, but we'll have to tap federal dollars, which will drive up costs because of some of those requirements. So it was an informative meeting with Raymond James discussing financing options. And then we had our annual elections, and for reasons I don't fully understand, Park City Board members made some motions, and eventually it ended up that Mayor's going to serve as the chair again. I'll serve as vice chair, and then Councilmember David is going to be the treasurer, all with Bel Air leadership this year. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dean.
I have a short report. Really just wanted to thank our public work staff. I know during these storms, they can be unpredictable and how you treat the roads versus timing of it. And although there could be improvement, I think, just really appreciate our public work staff that worked, worked a lot of hours to make sure we had some main routes cleared off and, and make sure to keep our safe, our city running and safe. So just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Yeah, well, thank you. Move on to mayor's report. Bear with me for a little bit. I got a little bit of, a few things here. So first, I also want to thank Pepper Works for the great job they did cleaning the roads. As I drove to church yesterday, Monday morning at about six fifteen a.m., there were no issues on the roads. They were a bit snow-packed, but very drivable. So thank you for a great job. On December nineteenth, I attended the REAP meeting. Nick Gregory, member of Derby City Council, provided an overview of some work done by the REAP Work Plan Committee. The work plan goals are to define the value of, and regional collaboration, identify the purpose of REAP, design and implement a model for local government collaboration, and develop a new membership fee schedule for members beginning in twenty twenty-six. So REAP also elected officers for next year. The chair is Ashley Coleman, the mayor of Ketchikan. The vice chair is Rod Crease from the mayor of Newton, and the treasurer is Russ Kessler, mayor of Hayesville. The next year, REAP will reduce its meetings to every other month, and will also reduce the fees charged to member cities by fifty percent. So wherever we ever hear of that in government, so that's a good thing. On December nineteenth, I also attended the CCA Board meeting. As this was our formal annual meeting, as Ms. Hamburg identified, we did have election of officers, so congratulations to Ms. Hamburg and Mr. David. KDG did give us a verbal approval of the design for the wastewater treatment plan expansion today. A formal letter will be forthcoming. Now that the design is approved, we're ready to go out for bid. CCA Financial Advisor, I've been working with quite a bit over the last several weeks, and he's provided a timeline of events that need to happen before March first in order to have the construction contract signed by March first. That's a requirement of the CCA agreements with Bel Air and with Park City. It's a tight schedule and may require Bel Air City to hold a special meeting to approve bonds, but that's to be determined, and if that is required, will be sometime in the second half of February. The meeting was also approved, an updated personnel policy to shore up some issues with use of CCA emails and social media postings. Sedgwick County Association of Cities will meet in Ketchikan Community Room at Ketchikan City Hall on January eleventh at eight thirty a.m. That's this Saturday. There will be a presentation by Don Schepler, President and CEO of Humankind Ministries concerning emergency winter shelter. For several years, I and Councilmember David have been involved with the feeding of the homeless in the overflow shelter. It's been moved twice now in the past two years. It'll be good to hear Humankind's vision for this new shelter. So K two fifty-four corridor development will also meet at the Ketchikan Community Room on January seventeenth at eleven thirty a.m. And the final KDOT management plan for K two fifty-four will be presented by KDOT. And since I will be traveling for the inauguration in Washington, I am hopeful Bel Air citizens, city council members can attend this meeting. So this is now my annual report. I always do this at the beginning, first meeting of each year, as my tradition, and I provide review of accomplishments. City manager gave his version of this at our last meeting in twenty twenty-four, so I'll not, try not to repeat too much of what he said. It was a good year, but not without its bumps in the road. The biggest change in twenty twenty-four was our city manager, Ty Lasher, retired, leaving some very big shoes to fill. We promoted Ted Henry, and he is finding his way as the city manager. So far, he's on the right track. Like all managers, Ted has a different style than Ty, but I believe Ted is truly working for the common good of ours as our city manager, and we'll look forward to working with him in the years to come. Our longest-tenured city council member, Justin Smith, resigned about mid-year. Justin often had very good insights, as he was able to bring to the council, city council. Fortunately, we had a great slate of applicants to fill his position. We select Tom's, we selected Tom Schmidt. Tom has brought a new set of insights to the city council and continues to help us make good decisions for the common good. On streets, we completed paving a project on Cozy Drive and completed rebuild of Fifty-third Street from Woodlon to Oliver. That was a very much needed rebuild, and I am very pleased to be finally able to do that. Unfortunately, for Woodlon, there was no activity on construction. KDOT did some research and found the source of the reason for the road failure. We hired engineers to do some additional research to better define the failure, and we are now having engineers researching the issues for redesign of the road so that a rebuild effort can focus on what is truly needed. Unfortunately, our negotiations with responsible parties for this failure broke down, and we had to file a lawsuit to recover damages. I am hopeful we can start the rebuild later in twenty twenty-five, but that may be too aggressive. While streets aren't important to me, the most important accomplishment in twenty twenty-four was gaining a new cost of service agreement with Chisholm Creek Utility Authority. This agreement puts Bel Air on a firmer ground with a fair stake in the future of the CCU. Related to this, as a result of the agreement with Bel Air, we approved pre-treatment of sewage ordinance that staff has been working with businesses to assure compliance. And we installed flow meters and auto samplers at the Harding and Fifty-third Street lift stations to measure flow and concentration of sewage going to CCU. We also agreed with Ketchikan to allow Bel Air residents to use Ketchikan brush site. This agreement also allows Ketchikan residents to participate in Bel Air Rec Center programs at the Bel Air resident rates. This looks to be a good win for both communities. A major undertaking this year was purchase implementation of a new ERP system to help our city with cost-efficient and effective operations. I believe we are about halfway into implementation. Our team is doing a good job with this, but of course, it is not without its hiccups. Getting water bills, water bills out timely has been the latest challenge, but it is improving, and I have made it very clear that I anticipate us to fully utilize this system, this system. I have seen too many organizations purchase ERP systems only utilize a small portion of its capabilities. Bel Air will continue to be a lean and effective organization with this software. We entered into a master service agreement with PEC to assist us with engineering needs. There is just too much engineering needs for our city engineer, Anne Stevens. She simply cannot address all of them. Lots of times, the needs are areas where she has little to no experience, and we all have that in our areas of vector T's. Hiring a company like PEC gives us the depth and experience that large cities are able to achieve without large staff cost. We also stepped up our cybersecurity as we hear in the news more organizations are having data breaches. Bel Air is working to help minimize this risk and protect our data. We replastered this Bel Air pool. Many will remember in twenty twenty-three, people were getting their feet cut in the pool due to deteriorating plaster. So it's been fixed, and the, in the process of getting it fixed, we learned the pool's in much better condition than thought prior to the researching and getting this addressed. We purchased two more police cruisers to replace aging vehicles. It helps keep our fleet on top shape. Our Public Works, we purchased a new crane truck, sewer camera equipment, and a new mower. We adopted with voter approval and ordinance to allow us to utilize our city website for certain required legal publications, and we are now a Purple Heart City to honor our veterans. We contracted with Sedgwick County to utilize our billing inspect, their billing inspection personnel. With the retirement of Keith Price, we lost a lot of knowledge and expertise in this area. Hiring Sedgwick County helps us fill some of the gap left by Keith. There continues to be, continues to be a lot of activity in the development front. City council dealt with at least twelve different developments in twenty twenty-four with no, in no particular orders. These were Arthur Heights Estates, Hollenbeck Farms, Bel Air Lakes, Terra Verde South, Walton's, Aspen Funds, which is building warehousing, Chapel Landing Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Editions, Wham, Phase Two, Skyview, Phase Two, and Bayside Development, which is more warehousing. This all comes together because of the dedication and focus of the Bel Air staff and the guidance of the city council. It is a great honor to have such a great group that continues to make Bel Air better on the edge for the common good. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very short report. I met with the chief of police for Bel Air Police Department. We were discussing about the status of ordinances regarding camping on public property without a permit within the corporate city limits of Bel Air. At this time, we were thinking that we need to do some updates in regards to that issue. At the next workshop, I believe, depending upon decisions made by council and administration, an ordinance will be proposed to council. What is the goal of this is one of the questions that I was immediately asked. It's very clear that the city of Bel Air has a governmental interest in ensuring that all streets and public areas within the city are readily accessible and that they're available to all residents and the public at large. Any type of ordinance would be looking at those streets and public areas, making sure that there was no illegal camping done on them that would constitute a public health, a health or safety hazard to any commercial areas or residential neighborhoods. The intent of the ordinance would try to treat everyone as equal as possible while preserving any health, safety, and welfare of all citizens. So that will be coming to you shortly.
Very good. Thank you. Our city manager's report. He must have a PowerPoint. He's going to video.
Of course. I'm more at home up here. Council, thank you. Well, I like to talk a little bit about snow removal. bit about snow removal, pretty topical subject. I'm sure you've seen it online. These are our main areas of concern when we have winter weather, all the main artillery rolls and collector streets. We always say staff, think the staff. And I sometimes hate that word because it kind of drums up a thought that there's hundreds of people in our staff that are doing work, but really it's Glenn, Adam, Shane, Sean, John, Greg, Shannon and Marty. When all this stuff happens and you can see that here, we have two big dump trucks that really break the ice and then two other basically F-250s with snow plows that follow up behind it and help clean up on the big trucks. What happens when we have a snow related forecast is one we pre-treat. We divide our eight members, four into a night shift and a day shift and Marty kind of works all shifts. So that's how that works. We, like I said, we have two big trucks, two small trucks. This past event, we did about 100 ton of salt and sand, 16 big loads of trucks and 14 small loads of try, of small loads. So that adds up to 100 tons of salt and sand we put on our roads. We've get a, we get a lot of questions of why we don't do residential streets. A lot of cities, most cities don't. We, we're one of those cities that don't. And I'm, came from the finance world, so I'll kind of give you some numbers on why that that would happen. In order to do all streets in Bel Air, we'd probably have, need a bigger, one more truck, two more smaller trucks and three more individuals to work at each snow event. So if you do the math, that's about $700,000 worth of equipment. And if we wanted to hire a full-time staff, you know, somewhere in the 200, $240,000 range if we wanted to do that. The other concerns I have, and it's something that, that comes into play is one, you have snowdrifts that go right up against your, against your driveway. We hear a lot of that as well as we have operators that are at night, there's a lot of cars on the sideways. It ups the risk for damages. The other thing I think we forget sometimes is those eight individuals also help control our water and sewer system in this, these types of events. When temperatures drop, we had one meter that was frozen. So that takes a guy or two to get off and replace that meter. And what happens when we have long sustain under zero temperatures is, you know, some meters, more meters might happen. So it really stretches the public works division really, really thin when we have something like this. But something to keep in mind as you'll probably get some questions, you know, why don't they do residential streets? Those are some different explanations of why. The great thing too about our crew down there is I met Glenn's 30, there's, we got 20, 30, 10 years' experience and I believe the city tried, could have been 15 years ago. And we got nothing but complaints for some of these reasons. So it's kind of an interesting discussion. If you ever want to have it with me, feel free, but I just wanted to give some highlights on that. But like you said, I, I thank those eight guys that cleared our streets the last two days. And with the forecast, we might have some more snow. So that's my report, Mayor, and I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the thorough review of what we do in snow plowing because I know it's pretty extensive. So, all right. Ready to move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. So the first item is resolution authorizing and providing for construction and equipment of a new public works facility. So the city of Bel Air operates the can, on a Kansas cash basis law, which require that no debt exceed available cash or budget funds. An authorizing resolution enables municipalities to undertake specific financial actions and ensure compliance with financial regulations. The public works facility project will be funded through a combination of grant proceeds and matching cash contributions from the city. This resolution is designed to maintain compliance with cash basis laws before we consider approving bids for the public works facility, which is an item B. And our city manager will, available to discuss and answer questions regarding this.
I didn't realize Kevin Callens here as well, if he wants to talk a little bit.
Okay. Any questions or discussions about this item?
So the, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr.
The concrete blocks, they don't seem to be near as high a quality of structure when you use blocks versus poured.
Okay, let's, let's stay with item A. Let's stay with item A. That's item B.
That's the next item?
Yeah, that's, this is item A. This is just fine cash basis financing. It's a resolution to how we're going to pay, finance this thing.
Oh, I got it.
Basically, okay.
All right. No problem.
Who worries? It's a good question.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, Ted, would you just run through about the base grant and then where the, our match and then what we're doing here?
Yeah, I tried to address some of that in the discussion part of my staff report. So the base grant would be about 4.7 million. Again, we, we said, we tried to set a little higher amount on this authorizing resolution, just so that we don't have to keep coming back and authorizing a new resolution. So I wouldn't say the 7.7 million is going to be the end budget. It's just one of those things that I put together with some line items that would be in the ballpark. I think we'll be able to be under that. It's just, I don't want to keep coming back with authorizing resolutions. The, the base grant's going to cover four point or 4.7 million of it. And what happens is each quarter will submit a reimbursement or a, we're going to spend this amount and the Department of Commerce will send us that. And we can do it kind of preemptively, but it's not sitting in a bank account right now. So this authorizing resolution kind of allows us to accept the bid without that. The big discussion we'll have is one, the base grant requires a 25% match. That's $1.5 million. So if you add that up, you know, you're slightly short there. So we'll be contributing more than the match to make up this project. But as you can tell, using the base grant would be very beneficial for all citizens and our economic development efforts in Sunflower Commerce Park. What I described is, and what I'm recommending is, we have some reserves that we can tap to make that match. Because this is the economic development slash infrastructure type spending, there's three different pots we can mat, get that match with. Some of our, our land reserve with land sales, that's, a lot of that has to do with economic development. And that, that would be one area that I would suggest us tapping to meet this match. Water and sewer funds would be our other options. Water, I would prefer to hold a little bit because of the drought, unknown drought restrictions, how that's going to affect our fund as well as with our master plan coming in. I know there's a water tower needs in the near future that we'll want to save up for. Likewise, with the sewer fund, we've, we've been saving quite a bit in the sewer fund to pay for this expansion, the sewer expansion. So I would like to see that go forward, get the bids out for that. So really, our, our best option is our land reserve to use for this matching fund in the staff recommendation, but I'm open for discussion. The way we'll do that is I'll probably have something in, in next council meeting, we'll have a kind of a transfer motion, meaning we're going to transfer this funds to dedicate them towards this project. But this is a good opportunity to talk about it if we wanted to.
Anyone have any questions or discussion about the, how Ted has proposed that we finance this?
I just, yeah, I know in the past few years, we've talked about what are we going to do with that land bank money? And if I recall the consensus, at least how I feel this is leveraging it in a, in a really meaningful way to, to meet all the requirements to use that base grant money. So I, I like the land bank idea.
Well, that fund is drawing interest of about 500,000 a year, isn't it?
300,000 a year. We did.
So can we just siphon the interest off for a couple of years and do it that way? Or do we have to dip into the actual principal?
No, because we're, because we're not financing this project. We'll have to, we'll have to pay for it in cash. So it'd be a transfer. But to your point, we've accumulated about $550,000 from the interest of that reserve fund since we set it up.
So that'll pay 30, 40% of what we need.
Correct.
So the base grant initially started out as to help Sunflower Commerce Park put in water and sewer lines. But as our engineers did the evaluation, didn't know how to size them. They didn't know if they needed a 16 inch line or an 8 inch line. And it didn't make a lot of sense to go put a line in that doesn't have hydraulic pressure it needs to have to, to work. So we said, okay, well, what else can you do? This is ARPA funds. This is not, this is something that's going to go away pretty quick if we don't spend it. It's, it's one of those things that unfortunately you use it or lose it kind of a deal, but it's a one-time opportunity. So this was, this is a way we come up with that Ted and, and his staff has come up with to be able to utilize these funds to the benefit of the city.
We'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for the construction and equipping of a new public works facility building in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. Any other discussion? If there's none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item B is the bid for construction of the public works facility. So the city's been working with Schaefer Architects and our owners representative for the past several months to design and bid a new public works facility to be located in Sunflower Commerce Park. The city held a bid opening on Friday, December 20th at 10 a.m. for contractors and submitting bids for the project. Matt Hamm with Schaefer Architects, who's Matt here. There he is. Okay, thank you. And Kurt Jurgensen is here, the owner representative to present the bids and discuss. So you gentlemen, come up and tell us all about this plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Kirk Jurgensen, as you said, with PEC. Matt is actually up here with me. I thought he was going to sit back there for a while. So no, not at all, not at all. Yes, we had four bids. We actually ended up talking to about 10 different contractors in total, all very reputable. Matt and I have worked with, I've worked with actually all of them at some point in my career. And I think Matt had a pretty similar record with those who we've chatted with, who actually ended up bidding. We're all very pleased with who submitted bids. As you are aware, Commerce, Crossland, EB and Icon were those contractors. Our base bids came in really well. This is the kind of report I love giving to you guys because it became, it was under bit, under budget. Those are the best kind of presentations to make. It's the other ones that are not fun. Crossland ended up being the low bid of 4,853,000. Our high bid was 5,180,000. Excuse me, as I'm going down some notes here. We are looking, we had five different alternates that we were looking at. In discussions with staff members, we're looking to alternates number one and two only. That total for those alternates is $795,000. So with the base bid and the alternates, we're looking at $5,648,000. The high bid I want you to know was 5,863. That's a spread of $215,000 from high to low. Those are some really, really tight numbers for this size of project. We had a total spread from low to high of $327,000. The base bids with the alternate was 305,580. And the difference in numbers, that's usually because of the different alternates that were taken. You, those numbers just kind of adjust at some points. That's basically 4.5% spread in your bids. Very tight. You can sometimes see a total spread of about 15. So we did very well. Congratulations, Matt, on his drawings, did a very good job. And a contractor that was definitely looking to make a, make a, make a tight bid on this. So that's kind of where we're at. We would look for Crossland with the two alternates as our low bid. Any questions?
So I think Mr. Schmidt had a question he started to ask earlier. So.
Right, but it looks like you're probably going to consider alternative one and two, then it's a moot point, I guess. So that's fine.
On those alternates, we were just looking to have some options that we could play with different sizes. And I know your question was about the concrete.
Versus poured, yeah.
Yeah. So now we're going to have actually a pre-cast building.
It would be a cast in place.
Okay.
The block is actually a de-.
Can you come speak in the microphone, please? Because this is broadcast and people don't hear you if you don't speak in the microphone.
Yeah, the, the, the way that the project is bid and the way that it's being accepted is with a cast in place concrete wall instead of the blocks. The blocks would actually be a deduct, but the cast in place would be a better product.
Thanks.
So you don't, you don't do a pre-cast, you just cast them in place?
Right. It, it will be formed and cast in place.
Yeah, okay.
I, I have a question. Nowhere in any of these discussions have we talked about anything about energy efficiency or things like that that should be designed into the building at this point before we move forward. I don't want us to build a cheap building and then spend a lot of money trying to heat it and air condition parts of it. Where were the considerations on that?
Well, the building is built to last a long time. It's a pre-cast building. So that will be a very durable, energy efficient building. It's got a good roof package, insulation. We're using infrared heat for the shop. So it should keep the heat in the space and it won't, when the doors open, you know, it won't blow out if it was, if it was a forced air or something like that, it would just leave the building. So it should heat the spaces and the, and the surfaces in the space. I, I think that a lot of effort was put into making it efficient and making it energy efficient in that way. Could, could we do more? Maybe. There are some options for greater efficiency. That would require additional money. So there are ways to make it more efficient. But we, we believe that as it is proposed here, it's an efficient building.
Is there any insulation on the concrete walls?
There is for the, for the office area and for the messing. For the shop area, we do not have in the current base bid budget insulation on the walls. There was some conversation about that, whether that was needed, you know, as people, as, as the doors are open and closed, you know, how much does the insulation value benefit the building? And what my engineer told me was that the space will remain a constant temperature because of the infrared heat, but there could be some condensation, some dampness of the walls, but nothing to be really concerned about.
Okay. I, I would like to see, see more insulation, I guess. And, and I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, but I really would like to see it well insulated. And I mean, like the last few days, especially if we have a door on the north, it's going to blow everything out of there. And even if you've heated up the equipment, it's going to cool off just from the wind chills and things like that. So I'm no radiant heat in the floor? Or is this all above ground radiate?
Yes, the infrared heat system is suspended from the roof structure. And so it will heat, you know, whatever's below it, it will heat. You know, any walls that are adjacent to it, it will heat. And those walls will absorb the heat and conduct it. That's the, the way that system works.
Yeah. So, so we're going to be fighting the thermal change in the concrete constantly then is what? When it's zero outside, that's going to be trying to get into the building.
Yeah, I, I think if you insulated the walls, there could be a difference in the temperature, but I couldn't calculate that. I'm not sure what the benefit would be from a, from a quantitative standpoint.
From, from the shop perspective, this says a lot of outside overhead doors, right?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any, was there any provisions for air curtains on those doors?
No, we did not design air curtains for the doors. That would not be typical from, at least from. That would not be typical from, at least from our experience.
Okay.
And back to, to the doors, are they going to be insulated or are they going to just be sheet metal?
I'm sorry?
The doors themselves, will they just be a piece of sheet metal?
No, they're, they're insulated doors.
Yeah, these kind of shops are really hard to keep warm, keep heated. My experience has been it just, yeah, you, you can get to some comfortable, reasonable comfortable temperature, but it's never, never an office setting comfort, so.
Well, you know, you get it to 50 or 60, it's going to be hot to the guys running around in their winter outfits.
Yep.
But keeping it at 50 or 60 is a factor for how the building's built and how much money we're going to spend on energy. And I would love to see us, you know, we did the thing with the air conditioners. We tried to do the most efficient thing we could do. And that's what I'm concerned about here is that we may be using old building techniques, which were fine in the 50s kind of statement. But now that we could have better resources, we could do something better that would lower our energy footprint. Because like I said, that's an ongoing cost to the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Matt, just a question. Is, is the way you designed the public works facility pretty common, pretty typical of what you'd see in other communities? As far as the shop area, that's, that's a pretty difficult thing to heat, even if you insulated it's kind of a battle.
You kind of, you see a lot of different systems, pre-engineered and pre-cast. I would say this is, since it's a precast building, that would be more of a rare, more substantial building than what you would typically see. I know early on, there was some conversation about maybe doing pre-engineered, just a metal building. And so it was the interest of the community and, and administration that this be a well-designed stout building that would last, and that's why it's precast. So I guess in answer your question, this is pretty typical, I mean, for a good building. It's definitely not cheap. It's definitely not, you know, designed in a poor way. You know, like any building, could we add to it? Yes, we could add insulation and metal panel to the outside of the shop and, and more thoroughly insulate it. And just, I don't know if this is applicable or not, but it, it could be added later too. Since this is a precast concrete building, the structure is already there. This, the building is already able to support whatever skin is added to it. So if you found in the future that you didn't like the performance of the building, it could be added. That's just an option.
We kind of talked about this in the past, but I'd like to refresh on it. Tornado preparedness on it, do we have a safe room in it? Or do we just have like a two by four studs with? What do we have for the employees to get into, especially with all those pieces and parts in the building? If a tornado hit that building, I sure don't want to be in there with that stuff flying around loose.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, I would say since, since it's a precast concrete building, it's a stout building anyway. But that's not the space that we're counting on. We actually designed a pre, a storm shelter inside the building as part of the locker room. So it will have, it's all, it's a concrete block. They pour the cores of the block full and then they pour a concrete slab on top of it, all thoroughly reinforced. It has a storm door on it and it will support the population of the building. So it's probably the safest place around by the time you count the outer shell and inner shell, right? So, yeah.
But it is encased in concrete.
Yes.
Just, just for a quick, all LED lighting, all energy efficient lighting. And that was really something we've, we've had a lot of discussions on about where's that right balance of energy efficiency versus building. And I think Kurt, anytime we had a meeting, he'd drive by our current public works facility and see if the, the garage door is open or not. And he'd always walk in and say garage door is open. And I mean, as, as little as two weeks ago, he would, you know, I, I think that the, the fresh air, when you're in those types of spaces are muchly needed and kind of a, a norm for our public works guys. So investing a lot and keeping the doors shut is probably not going to be the, we're trying to find that happy, happy medium between keeping our employees comfortable and saving on energy efficiency. So that's kind of, we, we've had a lot of discussions about that over the last two months. And this was kind of the right balance, we thought. But again, as Matt says, we'll continue to evaluate the financial impact on the operation of the building. And if we would need, if we see investing another hundred, $200,000 in this building is going to save us over time, we'll definitely bring that in front of the council. We just were trying to make the best decision with what information we have today.
Curiosity, is infrared heat gas fired or is it electric?
It's gas. It's gas.
Gas, okay. So the recommendation is to go with Crossland base bid and their alternate one and alternate two. Any additional discussion about the recommendation? Notice that says we have to take the recommendation. That was just what the staff of my group suggested.
Staff made a good recommendation. I was just concerned about the technicalities of the building itself.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to accept the base bid from Crossland in the amount of $4,853,000 and alternate one in the amount of $435,000 and alternate two in the amount of $360,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any other questions or discussion? There are none, call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Item C is a work order, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate all the input. Item C is a work order 2411 from professional engineering consultants. So the street maintenance plan was presented in November 12th City Council Workshop. And this agreement includes provisions for developing bidding documents, assisting with contractor procurement and providing construction observation and administrative services. So, and Stevens is here to discuss and answer questions. And this is one of the good things to have a PEC. She can coordinate this thing, but they do the heavy lifting on it, so.
Definitely. So as we discussed a couple workshops ago, this is the kind of end result of the street maintenance plan that has kind of been a combination of the last several years of planned maintenance that we haven't been able to get to because of costs of the first year's projects. So it does have, it still has some mill and overlay. It's got some curb replacement and it's got some patchwork in it. It hits a lot of the Pearson's neighborhood as well as the lawn terrace neighborhood and kind of should help round out that area. There was in the first patchwork project, we had a lot of residents stopping the contractor, stopping myself, saying, hey, why didn't you get this? Why didn't you get that? So I met with PEC and we walked all the streets again. You see much more on the ground than you do driving past. So we walked all the streets, marked out some more areas. I know there's going to be a few residents that still aren't happy because they have some of the oldest curbs in the city. But those oldest curbs are still functioning. The water is still going down and it may not look pretty, but it does function. And in, in my profession, I'm more concerned about function than pretty. So that's kind of some of the reasons why we chose some over others, but there's always room for getting more. But this is the first step. The idea is to get this out to the contractors within the next month or two so they can start bidding it. And we can, we're not waiting until October or so for this to get started. And then everybody's got their year filled up. So we're trying to get that. Yes.
That's good.
I take it the key item from here is that we won't be doing separate construction observation agreements since we're doing, PEC is doing all that as part of this.
That is correct.
Just one more observation. This amount was baked into what we presented previously, so it's not above and beyond what we were discussing. It's more of just confirming, I believe.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's authorizing the contract.
Authorizing, yeah, yeah. So it's within budget that we set or that we were looking at in November workshop.
And one, one quick question. As far as PEC and, and what they've done in the past, as far as this, the same kind of scope on the previous road maintenance projects, has there been anything that you've seen that you'd like them to be doing that they're not? That's not a part of their scope? That's something we should consider adding? I'm just asking the question while we're talking about budget. Is there something we're missing that we should be picking up? Or do you think we're, we've been covered pretty, pretty well on the inspection side?
Yeah, I was very happy with the communication of how everything worked in the last go around. When we first kind of got started on the patchwork projects, there was a lot of phone calls back and forth of what about this? What about that? And then I went out and spent some time with their inspector and said, this is kind of my decision-making process and how I decide whether to do a little bit extra or not. And this is what I'm looking for. And so once they understood that, then there was fewer calls and they were able to make some of those, some of those judgment calls on their own, always confirming with me, sending pictures. Or if I needed to go out to site, I would. Very happy with the communication, hey, we're going to be in this neighborhood. We're going to be blocking off this, these couple of driveways. So then we can get that, the notices out to the residents and keep them informed. I was very happy with that communication process. When they assisted with the slurry process, then that was, that went even better because we had whole streets that were affecting residents. And we were able to get that notification out early enough that the residents had time to adjust schedules, et cetera. Nothing's perfect, but I was really pleased with the way the communication worked. And for me, that's probably the utmost importance beyond making sure it's a quality product going down. But with part-time inspection, there's, there's only so much that you can catch. You just need to make sure that, you know, the overall process is there and contractors that you trust. But it's, it's that communication and the coordination, making sure we're doing what we can to have as little impact on residents as we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
So like, for example, when you do the mill and overlay in lawn terrace, how, like, how long roughly are you expecting residents not to be able to get in their drives and things like that?
I would say roughly two days.
Okay.
Usually you mill it all out in a day and then you put the tack oil down and then it goes right, the asphalt will go right, right back after that. So it shouldn't take much more. Now, if there's patchwork that needs to be done after milling, then that'll take a little bit longer. But you can usually drive around the patches unless it covers the entire width. But that is something that we're very conscientious of is making sure we disrupt as little as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we accept work order 24-11 from PEC in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed $125,000 for the design, bidding and construction observation and administration services for the 2025 street preservation program projects and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any additional questions, discussion? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Move on to item D. This approved reimbursement Dollinger Construction for a water line replacement. So recently, public works staff responded to a broken water line at 39th and Harding. At the same time Dollinger was installing storm sewer improvements in Aurora Park. After discussions with the parties on site, it was determined that the broken water line conflicted with the storm sewer line installation. To resolve the issue and proceed with the project, the water line needed to be lowered. And it was decided to have Dollinger lower the water line, both to repair it and to eliminate the conflict with the project. The city engineer Ann Stevens will provide for the details and answer your questions.
So I pretty much summed it up, except it wasn't just a little while ago. This was back in October. We're just now getting billed for the project.
Yeah.
That like, like the mayor said, this, this was a water line. We knew where the water line was horizontally, but we didn't know where it was vertically. And in order to keep costs low on the petition project, which was the Aurora Park Street and the sewer projects, we did not do any, any potholing. And that's something that I've been discussing with our engineers about, mainly with Garber who did this project. But where is that balance on, on cost conservative? Do, you know, is, how much do we spend early potholing? And how much do we just, we're going to hope and pray that everything's okay? And most of the time it is, but a couple of times, you know, like the situation you run into issues. Dollinger, when they hit the water line, they did offer to fix it for us. But then when we called the engineers out to look at it, we discovered that it was actually going to be in conflict with the storm sewer line. And there really was no wiggle room on elevations for that storm sewer to miss the water line. We also uncovered the CCUA, I believe it was a 16 inch force main. Fortunately, there was enough cover over that force main that A, they didn't hit it, which would not have been fun. And B, we were able to slide the storm sewer on top of it. We did end up putting a concrete cap over that force main. So if there's any settlement, any movement in that storm sewer line going on top, it's not going to affect the force main because nobody wants to deal with that. But anyway, Dollinger did offer to fix that water line and they did put in a temporary sleeve at no additional charge to the city. But ultimately it did needed to be lowered. They offered to do it as a straight pass through to the city instead of running it through the Kansas paving contract, which would have cost the city a little bit more in Kansas paving subcontractor markup. So that's kind of where we happened, where, where the process went. It was an emergency basis because we needed to get it done. We couldn't just let it sit open or sit, let residents sit without water, having that intersection blocked off. So it was kind of on the spot decision-making and it's not something that I had thought about and tie it till I got a phone call from Dollinger saying, hey, what about this, this cost? Like, well, please send it over and we'll get it through council and approved, hopefully. So that's where we're at. If you guys have any questions, happy to stand for them.
So you spent the money and now you're asking for a blessing? No, that's the right thing to do, really.
You know, it's, it's, yeah, we, we really didn't have much choice.
And this is kind of a, just for new council members or anybody, I have a $10,000 spending limit. Anything over $10,000, you'll see, even sometimes below. But when it's emergent, when we have residents without water, we have to make this decision based on that kind of emergency spending power. This is how it usually comes about. If, if something, if it's a major emergency, I'll of course update everyone at the time. But this just seemed like a no brainer to me, but that's why it's before you tonight.
And I will say that with, with these situations, especially in the older neighborhoods where we really don't have the record data on where these water lines and sewer lines are, we do have the GIS capabilities now that when stuff is exposed like this, be it intentional or not, Public Works does come out and gets locations on these pipes. So we have a record of it moving forward.
Yeah, just for record, this was plotted in 1950s. So it's been a long time ago.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
And I did have a question, since you brought up the 16 inch. I know that's not what we're voting on, but just a quick question, a follow-up on your point about the CCUA 16 inch force main. When a project is occurring in the city of Bel Air and a locate is called in, I assume Bel Air is responsible for locating the CCUA force main, but I just wanted to verify that. Or is that something CCUA is responsible to do?
Yeah, I believe that is CCUA's responsibility and that force main was located. We just didn't know the depth.
Yeah.
They do that every week, they're doing that almost weekly, doing locates.
I guess what I'm suggesting, and the reason why I ask that question, is the importance of making sure we know where the 16 inches is really high. Because like you said, if that would have gotten hit, that's a force main, it would have been a disaster. So I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is if any lesson we could have learned is that anytime we're, we're opening up a hole and we do have a chance to shoot the elevation of any utility, we should be taking that. And like you said, updating our GIS. So thanks for mentioning that and entertaining me on that point. Because that is an important thing. That's why GIS, that's why we have that system and it's making us smarter, making us better for future projects.
Yeah, and that, that's why we did make the expenditure to get the equipment to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I just, I heard everything you said. So to be clear, this amount is not going to go to the people in the Aurora Park project, even though it needed to be lowered for their projects. even though it needed to be lowered for their project because it wasn't added in with the Kansas paving. Is that right? The city at large is going to pay for it?
This, ev- even if this was added on to the Kansas paving portion, this was for the storm sewer project, portion of the project, which the city at large is paying for. So the city would have been paying for it one way or the other, or just saving that Kansas paving subcontractor markup. It would not have been pushed on the residents of Aurora Park that were involved in the paving petition.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move, we approve reimbursement Dollinger Construction for water line replacement in Aurora Park in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean and second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Move on to item E. So this is ordinance concerning amendment of chapter eighteen of the city code for the zoning map. So the last zoning map was updated in two thousand and twenty-three and since then, areas have been rezoned. And per city code, the map was reviewed and approved by planning commission and outcomes before the city council for final approval. And director of community development, Paula Downs is here to answer questions.
Good evening. This is our annual zoning map approval and review. Planning commission reviewed it. I listed in my staff report for the planning commission the updates, the highlights of the updates that were made on the map. You can see those spelled out. And basically, they were a result of whatever changes that had happened in two thousand and twenty-four. So we tried to update the map. There's a few, I'd say infrastructure kinds of improvements to the map itself, which is adding some different symbology. And we motivated, or we modified some of the colors, so it's a little clearer. They were getting a little blurry in my, trying to read it with my bifocals. And so now we have some colors that distinguish the map a little bit differently. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Are we going to get a copy put up in here?
We can get a copy put up in here, absolutely.
Great if we could do that. I thought we were going to do that before, but didn't, I haven't seen it.
Do that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion for Paula?
Mr. Mayor, self clarification. I believe there were no changes to area, just within the area we already were responsible for, some changes to some of the zoning.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we didn't annex anything.
Because I know we talked about that earlier, I just want to make sure this isn't a change regarding size, just within.
Correct.
Some zoning changes, got it?
That's correct.
Okay.
If there's no discussion, I'll undertake a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I motioned to approve an ordinance concerning the amendment of chapter eighteen of the city code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with the zoning map, all within the city of Bel Air, Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt and a second by Mr. Welch. And being this is ordinance, it needs a roll call vote, so I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Jim Benat?
Aye.
Mr. Greg Davis?
Absent.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Tom Schmidt?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good, thank you. Item F is a P U D twenty-four oh two. And this is, the planning commission held a public hearing on this P U D and voted to recommend its approval in November. At their December meeting, the planning commission approved final plat. Planning commission's recommendation is now before the city council for consideration. If the city council accepts this commission, commission's recommendation to P U D may be adopted through an ordinance. The city attorney Maria Schrock is here to provide a motion, has provided motion language and on the council's agenda, along with a draft ordinance. So since this is a zoning matter, we have certain protocols to review, so I'll, I'll start with that. Soon as I can get it up here on my computer. Because my mouse wants to play games with me. Okay, so this is, this is to change from an R four to R five and R six in the preliminary P U D for Spring Pines, formerly called Homestead at Spring P U D. The property is generally located at north and east of Fifty-third Street and North Oliver, Bel Air, Kansas. If council approves the recommended zoning change request, it would be adopted by an ordinance. So disqualifications we need to declare and a quorum determined. So before we proceed, the hearing, does anyone in the council intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest? If I don't hear of any, I'll let the record show that no one is disqualifying themselves. So ex parte communications, does anyone on the city council receive any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this addend to item, which they would like to share? And I have not seen anybody volunteering for that. I'll so let the record show that no one is, is reflecting in ex parte communications. So city clerk, has we received any protest petition on this case? Thank you. Let the record show that no protest petitions have been received. So summary of hearing, has anyone on the council received the unapproved? Has everyone on the council received the unapproved minutes? I think they're approved minutes now in this case, aren't they? This is from November.
This is from December.
This is from December?
Twelfth.
This is from December, not November?
The P U D is from November. The next case that's combined with it, same case is December twelfth, so you should have the November.
We have both in the packet.
Yes.
Okay. So I think that we need to make sure that council members have reviewed both minutes. The planning commission, this says from December twelfth, we summarize the public hearing for this case. Was the public hearing held on the twelfth or in November?
November.
So November, December twelfth? Okay.
November.
Oh, November.
Was the date of the P U D.
Okay, so that's when the held public hearing was November, okay. All right. So that summarizes the public hearing for this case. So just need to confirm that all city council members have had an opportunity to review those minutes. They are in the packets, okay? And if they have, let the record reflect that everyone has responded, yes. So having discerned that council members have received the required information, city staff will provide a report first, then the applicant, if the applicant is present, and I do not see them here. So I'm going to assume that you're going to offer the report.
Yeah. My, I included the staff report that has not changed substantially from November about this case related to the, the rezoning request. The city review of the plat is in your packet, but everything was reviewed, approved. The golden factors were reviewed with the planning commission. There is nothing that would prohibit this development from moving forward. The recommendation of staff was to approve the preliminary and the, the, both the preliminary plat and the preliminary P U D, because both cases came at once. And then because there's not really a final P U D in zoning, the zoning was approved as zoning. So this case will be to approve the zoning as represented. And then your next item, we will talk about the plat that went along with the zoning change.
I do have a question about this. I know that one citizen did ask a question about fencing and that there was some, that was resolved through plating, but it seemed very brief. Can you elaborate on the fencing?
Yes, and that's part of the final plat, so it was included. And we'll, I mean, I'll answer it for the next item.
Okay.
So yes, but yes, all of his concerns were addressed in the final plat and the final plat was updated with those concerns. They provided an easement for him to access his property on the north end, even a sliver of land in between. And then they also completed the fencing requirement that he asked for. In fact, they met all of his needs. They agreed to all of his concerns.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Downs?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have one, but I think it may be more in concern of the plat.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, I might ask it now because it could change zoning consideration with density, depending on your answer.
Sure.
So looking at the, and I think I'm looking at the plat, it looks like the south section of this, you know, parcel A has one entrance and exit. And then if you look up north, so parcels B, C, and D, look to me like there's a plan to have two. Looks like there's a plan that that circle on the north side would also be an entrance and exit. I just know in the past, on some of these developments, we've really shied away from having a one, one entrance, exit, just from a safety standpoint. I know this went, I know this went in front of fire and they had their blessing, but I just wanted to speak to that a little bit, sort of the thought process of the size and the area and the access for safety reasons for the public.
Sure, and it does reflect on the plat. So I want you to, I also share with you that all the plats are submitted to several people. Utilities and the fire is one of them. And so their only comments when they connected with me was, does the, does the Bluebird Drive, which is the one on the north, connect to Oliver? Yes, we have entrances and exits. He wanted, they wanted to know what the drivable surface would be in that area, which is concrete, which is great because it, it'll manage the heavier trucks, fire, trash, all those kinds of things. And then they were concerned about the turnaround ability of the truck. They were concerned only because they did not know that the, that would open onto Oliver. So basically, it's not a dead end, so they don't have to make the full turn. They just make a half turn and go out onto a street or come into the development. And then the southern portion of the plat, which you mentioned, it's served by Glendale Street and it's entering onto Fifty-third. So there's twenty-nine lots and they're single-family homes there. And really, the maximum lots to have one exit or entry point into a development is thirty. So they're underneath, they're underneath that requirement. So the fire department had no other follow-up comments about concerns related to traffic flow and those kinds of things.
Gotcha. So based on just the number, it's under the recommended number?
Correct. Now, we would have had a different issue if these would have been multifamily lots or something different, but because they're single-family and they're under the thirty count, which is why they probably designed that way, there was no concern from the fire department after those answers were provided.
Perfect, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm kind of in a similar boat as council member Dean. I, but I want to ask it now. So on parcel four in the north there, it says that there will be two hundred and seventy-two dwelling units, but that is not fleshed out yet. I mean, we're just not to that point is, of what that would look like?
Well, if you, if you see the plat, so one of the things, let me pull the right map here. When you look at the, the way that the development in totality is broken up, they provided in parcel A that that would be a commercial area. In parcel B, those would be single-family homes. In parcel C, those would be two-family. And then in parcel D, that would be multifamily. So moving from single-family to multifamily to two-plex to an apartment. Now, in the parcel related to what they're identifying as multifamily or parcel D, it has not been fully fleshed out yet. They are reserving that, but have not submitted it. So their subdivision layout is related to the other three kinds of phases, which is, this is a phased work also. So if anything changes within those phases, then they would have to replat and come back.
Since we're talking about that, there's a lot of empty space in parcel B that's covering sewer lines and stuff. What, what are the plans for that? Do they think that might be a park or what, what are they?
Remind me again where you're looking. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking south. Is it labeled Reserve A?
Yeah, I think Reserve A is what you're talking about.
Yeah, Reserve A.
Between parcel B and parcel.
It's an odd shape and it's got lots of sewer line underneath it.
Yeah, I, they have, I don't, I don't have a fully fleshed out. I know it's not going to be developed, so it's probably going to be green space, which, but on that green space, I don't know what that's going to look like. There's also a detention pond.
Is Reserve A not where the, there's a lift station at Reserve A?
Yeah, there is.
Put a lift station down there.
You can barely see it, there's a little bar.
The lift station. Oh, sorry, yeah. Okay, the lift station is in this kind of square right here. This area is an existing detention basin. It's not really, it's, it's basically an old farm pond. Not very fancy, it's certainly not engineered. And then the other, this area is going to be a pond. And then I think this area is just open space. It wasn't, they didn't have any plans for ponds or anything there.
So the farm pond's going to stay?
Correct.
Be redesigned or something?
Farm pond wetland type area.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I'm glad there's that much green space there. I, I was concerned that they might come back and do something later.
And there was some consideration during the planning commission too, when you get towards the north end where the multifamily complex was going to be, that there would be some sort of green space and potentially a park. To what extent, I don't know yet, but there was some questions from the planning commission about that.
Okay, any other questions for?
So just to be crystal clear, when we start talking about multifamily, people start freaking out a little bit. But to, when we do this zoning case here, anything else that they do down the road, it said in there pending, no building permits would be issued until we see more definite plans and they would have to approve those down the road.
Correct. They, they would have to submit plans and specifications for a permit to be pulled. But right now, it is zoned and intended to be a multifamily.
Or parcel B and C?
No, just D.
Just B. What's C going to be?
So.
D is?
D is the multifamily, which you don't see anything really up there yet. And then C is two-family. Parcel B is single-family and then parcel A, a small portion is a commercial. And it's phased right now.
I'm, I'm losing track of what's what, because that one, Glendale is separated and I keep thinking that's a different parcel. That's my problem.
It's just separated by the ponds.
Is there any more questions for Ms. Downs? Not when we move on to, do we have any written communications? Have any written communications been received? And I think that's maybe directed towards the city clerk. Then let the record reflect that no written communications have been received. And is applicant present? No? So we won't hear from the applicant or anybody from public comments? If anybody, don't see anybody from the public, so. I guess we can move on to council member, council deliberations. If you have any more things you'd like to ask or discuss, please keep in mind this is a zoning issue, so we do need to make our decisions based upon the golden factors. And that needs to be articulated in the record.
Well, I, I kind of said this before, I, I am happy with this. I'm especially happy of all the green space. I think it will be a good development. I'm not quite sure what it's going to tie to in the north. That's Keachai North there, correct?
Correct.
I, I have no negative thoughts on it.
I, I, just one other thing I was going to bring up was with talking about the amount, the number of dwelling units. You mentioned this was phased. So right now, one of my initial concerns was just the amount of people on a two-lane road there at Oliver, you know, turning out left if you have an apartment building there. But this may be down the road where we'd expand or do things. I guess obviously you didn't have any concerns or it wouldn't be here, but how close are we bumping up against the density for that amount of land for that many dwelling units? Is it, would you say it's getting towards the top or what would you say?
I think that the, the largest number of lots are going to be exit. I think that the, the largest number of lots are going to be exiting in two different ways. And then the south lot will be exiting on a different road. We might have to think about what it might look like if an apartment complex was developed. And maybe the exit could potentially be back onto the north, you know, the north side, because right now there's nothing on the north. So we just have it on the Oliver side and in the south side. So we'd have to probably consider or maybe have to look at what that would look like to, depending on how big the complex is. And if that's considered the last phase, and so a lot could happen between now and when they build. But yeah, it would be a consideration as we're reviewing that.
Do you, how close is this to the railroad tracks that are north of that?
Oh, good point. Uh, it's not on there.
Half a mile?
Half a mile.
Yeah.
A little distance.
It's a little ways.
Because I didn't know how that north exit was going to work if it's right against the railroad track.
I don't think it is. But I think that, I think that they might have to consider, depending on how big the units are, we might have to consider another exit.
Okay.
North, it might be on Oliver. I don't know yet. So when we get to that phase, we'd have to consider that and evaluate that.
The north line is the half mile, correct? I, I've driven down through there and I think that's a half mile north of 53rd.
Okay.
And then there's the railroad track on up there by 254. It's fairly close to 254.
So there's a road plan for the north side there? I didn't think so.
No. And, and they haven't really, like you can see that they haven't laid out that multifamily on that lot yet. So I don't know what's going to happen, but from a zoning perspective, I think that what they're asking is, can they zone it that way? There's no reason why they can't. And then the specifics, when they decide to start building, there might be some other evaluations related to that.
But to put a road on the north, there would have to be some ground provided by Ketchay.
Correct.
Yeah. So there's.
It's most likely Oliver.
To get, to give you an idea, there's 50 acres north that's actually in the county between Ketchay and Bel Air. So I, yes, I think there's future plans in works, but right now that's, this is what is in Bel Air and what the current owner owns.
All right. Okay.
If you have the crystal ball, let us know.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I just wanted to talk through this a little bit. So with homestead, you know, senior, senior living on the south, I certainly appreciate the use of this. I think it makes a lot of sense, the way they laid it out with single family along 53rd with consideration for access and density and, and stepped it up as they went north so that there is a natural buffer between each of those progressive zoning levels, if you will. I'm probably saying the wrong verbiage there, but I, I appreciate that's sort of the intent of a lot of zoning is not having this huge jump between one, one level to four levels up and there's a natural step up to, to that higher density, which we'll visit about at a future date. But, you know, I think it fits the character of the neighborhood that we're starting to develop along 53rd. And it's nice to see it starting to take off along Oliver as well. So I certainly appreciate the developer's take on this and I think it lines up with a lot of what we've got going on, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I appreciated the comments about working with the homeowner and, and really meeting all of their concerns. I think based on staff recommendations and, and what Councilmember Dean mentioned about the character of the neighborhood and what's surrounding it, I'm going to support this.
Yeah. One of the things I wanted to point out that I appreciated about this is the way that this is, this has been laid out with a buffer. You know, you got a multifamily that hasn't been decided yet, but you again, you've got duplexes and you got single family. That's all very good planning, I think. So I appreciate that. And I think that's, makes it very suitable for the uses of this property. Trying to cover the golden factors here.
Are there any more steps?
No, we're ready for a motion if somebody is ready to make one.
I will make a motion to approve the findings of fact and recommendation of the planning commission for PUD-24-02. Adopt the ordinance as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Welsh, second by Mr. Dean. And this is a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Calabine?
Aye.
Mr. Langner?
Aye.
Mr. Tom Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Javon Ash?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. On item G, this is, back to my notes. This is a consideration dedicated to streets and other public wireway service and utility estimates for the same. Is this the same, the final plat of this? Yes. For the final plat of this same property, which is SD 2403.
This is just the plat a little bit that we were talking about. They have, it was currently unplatted. They met all and it conforms to everything with the, within the approved preliminary plat and the subdivision regulations. The final plat was distributed for comment. All comments were updated. And so the final plat meets all the review comments and needs of the city. And we're recommending that you approve the final plat with the condition to place zoning uses on the plat for each parcel. However, we waived that because then we would have to come back and change the zoning and we didn't want to do that. They will make modifications if they need to at any point, but they are planning to use this as a phase, according to the zoning that you guys just approved. So they have met all of the needs and made all the updates. And again, worked diligently with the adjacent homeowner to provide some fencing and an exit or a reserve for him to be able to utilize and get off the north end of his property and a lot of other options.
I think this is the time to ask the nasty question. We have the plat. What do we have to guarantee that the plat doesn't change? And that the buildings on it conform to what the plat says as platted, currently platted? I'm looking at Maria and I think she's getting right to answer.
Is your concern that they're going to deviate into some type of a lot split? Or it's going to deviate with some type of a use?
Particularly a lot split for the duplexes. You know exactly what I'm asking. That they come back later and decide they don't want to sell duplexes. They want to sell single family or something that.
This really comes down to the zoning and what's mentioned in the specific plat, what's mentioned as the allowances, the uses per the zoning district.
So again, what guarantee would we have that this doesn't change?
Well, if it does change, they're going to have to file another kind of case with us. So if they change the zoning or want to change the zoning, if they want to change the way in which they are developing this site, then they would have to file something, an application with the city.
So often we have developers' agreements. Is that something that's being done here? I haven't seen one if there is.
That's a great question. I, I would have to go back and look. It's been unplatted for a really long time. And I don't, I'll have to go back and look and see if there was a developers' agreement that has been developed. The idea of the developers' agreement is to make sure that we're addressing public infrastructure, drainage, water, sewer, streets, those kinds of things. So unless there's something else in the developers' agreement that enters in potentially that they would buy light, but otherwise the developers' agreement would be.
So oftentimes a developers' agreement's turned into an HOA type of an affair. I also understand that a lot of times restrictions are placed right on the plat itself.
Correct.
And I do see a couple here on this one. So, but they're, they're pretty generic, I think. So, okay.
Okay. I guess I'll have to be more explicit because nobody's answering my question. We have had a case where it was platted.
Correct.
The developer came in and replatted it without the city's permission. And then we had to deal with that. And we've actually got another agenda item, similar case tonight. So what do we have to hold this developer to this plat? Or some kind of financial incentive for him to not go out on his own, strike out on his own and do something without our approval? I know you said he's supposed to come to the city, but people don't always do what they're supposed to do.
I'm happy to answer it the best that I can. And that is, these recent cases that you're hearing are unique to us, to resolve. They are happening in the region and everybody is struggling with trying to find a solution and figure out what needs to be done. And that's what we're in the process of doing. So I don't know if there is a catch-all, resolve-all ability yet. And we are in the preliminary stages of that. And so we're hoping that we can resolve or at least create a situation in Bel Air that provides us the ability to review, gives developers flexibility, but also make sure the city's aware of what's happening related to these plats, the lot splits, as you've referenced in some of the cases. So there's not a solution, but we're working on trying to figure out where we can fall. I think that's a fair statement, but the manager.
Yeah.
I would like to trust the developers and we have in the past, but we've now been shafted twice basically.
In, in real time, if, if the zoning administrator has, you know, that we can choose not to issue permits, we can do certain, certain enforcement measures if during the construction of something. But once it's constructed, then, then that's where we're kind of working through this new particular issue. And that, so, so as far as, yes, you can't just do what you want in the middle of construction. It's just the cleanup side of things is what we're going through right now.
Correct.
That goes right back to they did what they weren't supposed to do. And I don't want to hold it against this guy, but I, I'd like to, we've got to come up with a method to prevent that from happening again. And I strongly suggest that it's a financial guarantee. That if they want to change something, they get it okayed first, which we probably would do in these cases, except they just didn't bother and now we've got to go through with something else.
Yeah.
I know you can't.
We are where we are and exactly what the city manager said. All the way through construction, all the way through final occupancy, they did everything they said they were going to do. And past that, now we're trying to figure out how we can be a partner with the developers and how the developers can be a partner with the city. And we just don't have a great answer right now, but we are working on it.
So a point of order here, let's stay with this particular one and not talk about other, other issues. I think what I'm seeing that's missing here is always we've seen, correct me if I'm wrong, but always we've seen a developers' agreement come with these plottings. And I don't see that. And I don't know why we're not seeing that. So it would define those, those covenants that the, the developer's going to comply with. And, and sometimes those can be put right on the plotting as well, but I don't see that. And I'm not sure that this is ready for approval without it. But somebody correct me if I'm misunderstanding this.
When are they wanting to start development?
This, we just, this is just the final plat. I have no idea.
Okay.
They will submit plans when they're ready to build.
Then I want to make a motion to deny the applicant. Well, do we, if we deny this, does it have to go back to the planning commission?
If it's denied, then they would reapply.
Well, we agreed to the. We agreed to the zoning. So all we're arguing about is the plat. That would have to go back to the development? To the, I'm saying the wrong word.
Send it back.
I think if you table it.
I think, well, I'm just, table it, I guess, would be for too indefinite a time. And that's why I'm, table may be all right. I just, I don't want to act on this tonight. I want to see some more effort put into this with marking things down and delineating what's available and what's not and what the repercussions are if they don't follow the rules.
So I would.
Like the mayor said, the developers' agreement.
We, I, and I'll look at Maria, but if you table it tonight, we'll work up a developers' agreement with the developer there and get it in front of you as soon as possible. And, and where you'll have the plat, final plat with a developers' agreement. And then we can go forward with it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table the dedications within the final plat for spring finance division and authorize all required signatures.
Motion by Mr. Welsh to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Schmidt. Any additional questions or discussion?
I, so just to be clear, if we table it, this will not have to go back to planning commission, no new noticing or anything like that. You guys can just work on that and bring it back to us when it's ready?
You're correct.
Okay.
Good. That's why I was hoping you would find out.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question though for Paula and for Ted and Maria, just to ask the staff. Are you comfortable with this being approved without a developers' agreement?
Knowing the developers and the developer representative, I think we're pretty, pretty sure that they're going to work with us. The way, developers' agreements, in my experience, have been pretty, yep, we agree, agree, agree. And it, it's pretty standard, fair.
So you don't foresee working one up to be an issue either? I'm just asking both ways.
I, I would, I would imagine we have it to you on the 21st.
Sounds good. Thanks.
So, so no undue burden here? That's what we're hearing. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? No, no. We have a vote or a motion on the floor, table this item and I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Prose, same sign. That motion carries four to zero to table. Next item in. This may take a little time. I don't know. This is another. Another PUD from planning commission. And this, we need to go through the protocol again. I would like to ask for a five-minute break before we do this.
I'll make a motion for a seven-minute break.
Well, second.
A motion for a seven-minute break and second by Mr. Dean. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who's too bad, that motion carries four to zero. Okay, we had a small break and call meeting back to order and move on to item H, which is PUD 2404. So this PUD proposes a final planned unit development to convert approved duplexes into townhouses with zero interior lot lines on reduced lot sizes with, within an R4 zoning district located in a portion of Chapel Landing Phase Two. At their November meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing for this PUD and tabled it for further consideration. At their December meeting, the planning commission recommended approval with some, with some modifications. The planning commission's recommendation is now before the city council for consideration. City attorney Maria Schrock has provided motion language in council's agenda along with ordinance. And again, since this is a zoning matter, we have to go through a certain protocol. So I'll go through that. The planning commission's recommendation was approved zoning change with modifications as noted in planning commission minutes of December 12th, 2024. For proposed final PUD containing approved duplexes to be converted townhomes with zero interior lot lines on a reduced lot size in an R4 zoning district as built PUD 2404. Property generally located on East 53rd Street, North and Pinecrest Street in Bel Air, Kansas. So first we need to make sure to qualify that we have a quorum. And if there's any disqualification to be declared. So we need to know if any of the city council members intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case. Let the record show that no one has said they've wanted to disqualify themselves. We do have a quorum that we have four council members here, so that is a quorum. Ex parte communication, has anyone on the council received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share? I, I will just tell you that I did have one communication with the chair of the planning commission. It came up when we were talking about adding another person to the planning commission. So this came up, he said basically he was trying to pattern this similar to another case like this in his discussions, but that is the only ex parte communication I had. Has there, has Clark received any protest petitions in this case? Thank you. Let the record reflect that no protest petitions have been filed. The summary hearing, so has anyone in the council received the approved, has everyone in the council received under the minutes of the planning commission of December 12th, 2024, which summarizes this case? Make sure that everybody has and let the record reflect that everyone has responded, yes, that they've seen the summary. Staff report, so city, Ms. Paula Downs is here to present her report.
This might be a little unusual based on where we've been with this case. It is a complex case, like another similar case that we've had before. But I feel like as it's moved forward, it started in August 2024, when the first lot split was noticed by the previous zoning administrator. The PUD case was filed and it included recommendations at the time that may needed, or I felt warranted additional analysis. Based on the previous case also, I know the council had a lot of discussions, requested that the applicant provide some documents or agreements. And so when the, when we left city council on that case, there was some feeling on staff's part that we might want to include that in a recommendation moving forward and ask for that from the, this applicant in this case. And so prior to the city council, we did a more detailed analysis of the case. And although the city can request whatever they want, if the applicant says yes, then they will move forward. But if the applicant says no, there was no basis to do that really related to the zoning regulations or the subdivision regulations. So what I did was worked closely with PEC to just analyze this case again with fresh eyes and not follow what had previously been developed in a staff report. And so this staff report that I provided to you is a further analysis of where we've been. And based on the tools that I have at hand, which the tools currently are the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations in our code. And so there's a lot of information in this report as an analysis. But where I wanted to get to go was, yes, acknowledge that the application filed with the PUD agreement, which is really a text version of what could appear on the plat. But I think we need to review the PUD agreement to make sure we are clarified and we have some specific definitions and clarity in order for us to make some better recommendations. I'm hoping that you, and I'm recommending that you all return this to the planning commission so that we can revise and review with the applicant, the PUD agreement, so it reads as it needs to. There are several obvious, non-conforming items that have come up because of the lot split. But we want to make sure that whatever we're asking for in a PUD agreement can be clarified and we can work towards resolving that. We could, you know, we can, we can require them to replat this. I think that we want to work with them before we require that. And I'm willing to work with the PUD agreement to make sure we come to some agreement that we can support full. But there's nothing contained in this application that would not lead us to work with and move forward with what's been presented in the application. So we are not recommending a staff after review and after reviewing the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. The staff does not make a recommendation that requires them to provide additional supplementary documentation. Example, some of the other documents that had been requested in a similar case because it's outside of the city zoning or subdivision regulations. And so we can't make a recommendation for that. And so I wanted to modify my staff report to accurately reflect the analysis based on the criteria, which we're limited to. And that is the golden factors. And so you can see there's a, there's an explanation for each of the golden factors. I think of concern mostly would be the lot, minimum lot areas and number four and number six, right? So we need to kind of evaluate the PUD a little bit more carefully and provide some better definition of what is being asked in this application. And one way to do that is to return it to the planning commission. And the reason why I also like the idea of returning it to the planning commission, they are, they did not receive the in-depth analysis. And I want them to have the opportunity to have the in-depth analysis and be able to ask questions and provide an accurate recommendation back to the council. And then I felt like that was a responsible thing to do from a staff perspective. And of course you have other options with, with the motion, but I'm hoping that you will follow the staff recommendation.
So just a point of clarification. The current condition is that this is non-conforming to the zoning requirements of this property. Is that correct?
The current plat.
It's non-conforming to the current plat or this current zone?
The, well, zone, yes.
Both.
But the plat was not designed to have lot splits.
Right.
Right.
Plat was not designed for that. First, non-conforming to the plat and it's also non-conforming to the zoning.
Asking for the zoning.
Zoning of this, of this property.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we understood where this, what the situation is that we're dealing with. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else, anyone on this council have any questions for Ms. Downs?
Did, did they file a new plat that would include center lines to make it condos? Or are they wanting to file a new plat?
So where we are right now is that we have an original plat, original zone, full building. There's, there's been things built. And then after the construction, a lot split was filed through the registered deeds.
So they filed a new plat?
No.
How do you do a lot split without a plat? I'm confused here.
You can probably talk to the applicant who's in the room about what, what the process they followed and why they followed it.
Okay. Well, then my next question is, if you split this lot to be condos, are they currently building to the standard for condos or are they still building to the standard for a duplex?
The lot split is a duplex. It's built to a duplex.
So even if we agree to do this, then the buildings were not built to the spec for a condo, even after he split the lots to make them condos? So he's not following the building codes?
So the actual PUD is a proposed, a final PUD containing approved duplexes to be converted townhouses with zero interior lot lines on a reduced lot size in an R4 zoning district.
I'm not asking for what he's asking for. I'm asking for what he has done.
Well, what he's done is he's built duplexes and he split the lot and the duplex. What he's asking for in the application is to approve the duplexes as built, which they're built. They have their occupancies and convert them to townhomes that would require a zero interior lot line, which means that he'll have a reduced lot.
There's a timing issue here and you're skirting all the way around it.
I'm not skirting, sir. I, I was very clear that when they were identified after the fact, the lot splits were identified after the fact.
That's fine, but I said after he filed the lot split, was he still building to duplex standards or condo standards? Cause those are different building codes.
I can't answer that question.
Well, I think that's very important.
But I don't evaluate it on a building code perspective.
You'll have a chance to ask that of the applicant.
You will. We are reviewing just the zoning PUD case, not the building code piece. And the planning commission was not reviewing the building code piece. So he's built the duplexes and he wants to convert them to townhomes.
I understand that, but I'm just, my point is I think he should have asked for a change before he continued building if he is still building the wrong thing for what he's asking for the change for.
Yeah, I think that needs to be asked of the applicant.
Okay. But she can't justify it, but she could possibly address the timeline is what I'm.
Okay, timeline's fine.
Well, the timeline was that we located it in August, but I don't know how long they had been split.
Are they still building there?
They're still building. I don't have the exact number, but they're still building.
And are they conforming to the building code right now for what they're doing? Well, but, but they're not building duplexes because they've done a lot split.
They haven't done the lot split on the entire area. You can see on the map, there's a map here.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because if he's asking for a change for undeveloped lots, that's one thing as opposed to asking for a change for something he did.
So if you look at the, yeah, you can kind of see it up there. If you look up at the the PUD area, out of all the lots, we've got one, two, three, four, five splits to date.
So he's splitting these one at a time? I hope I made myself clear there. If he wanted to split the rest of unbuilt lots, I'm okay with this. What would really make me mad though is if he's done lot splits and isn't building to the building code and, and is coming back saying mea culpa when he knew good and well what he was doing.
So we've been issuing permits based on the plans that have been submitted. And they are following the building codes as submitted. And they are following the building codes as submitted.
Right, but it sounds like they may not be submitted according to the top, type of lot that they are.
Uh, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that the reason why we're here today is because they built, but lot split after occupancies and we were done. So they built according to what they had requested and then lot split, which is what we're trying to resolve.
So they're not currently building?
They are currently building.
I think.
According to the building.
We're, we're going around the circle, so let's, let's, uh, let's cut that off and ask those questions of the applicant as soon as he's able to come up and speak. Okay? Any other questions for Ms. Downs? If not, I'll ask, have we had any written communications been received? Thank you. For the record, in fact, no written communications have been received. So now I'll ask the applicant to please come up and make his presentation. And when he, after he makes his presentation, we can have this discussion that you've been trying to have.
Hopefully he will answer my questions during his presentation.
Jay Cook, Baughman Company, agent on behalf of the applicant. This is a fun case. This is the first time, um, that I have had three meetings regarding the same zoning item. Staff reports change as new information is given, but I've never in my time seen golden factors change. I'm not sure that that's something that is, is very common for golden factors to change. I've also never seen a recommendation from the planning commission be ignored and a different recommendation be put in once we get to city council. Uh, the recommendations of permanent staff are here that are, they're different than what the planning commission recommended. So this is a bit of a, uh, in honor of Ted's chiefs, we're moving the, we're definitely moving the field goal posts a lot. When we started this out, um, we were made, our, my client was made aware of the issue, immediately contacted us to fix the problem, met with Ted and Keith Price at the time, and had three meetings with staff. We've done everything staff has asked as far as getting the P U D drawn up, only to have everything changed every time I have a meeting. I don't really want to get into a lot of it. I think it'd be better to answer questions. I don't think I'm going to get a favorable vote, no matter what I say. But I will answer some questions and duplexes and townhomes have the same building code. They're built to building code. So you're not correct in that the building code would be different with a lot line through it or a lot line not through it. Permits are pulled for duplexes. They're purchased by individuals, the individuals aside, do I want to split this and sell it as two units? Or do I want to rent out two units? What we've decided to do in some cases is to split them. This has been happening in the city of Wichita for two decades. The person who purchased the development after it was platted did not realize that the zoning is different or the requirements are different in Bel Air than in the city of Wichita. Wasn't a malicious intent, it was just an oversight on process. The funny thing about the history of this, uh, Ms. Downs says it was noticed in 2024. I actually noticed this in my tenure here with the city of Bel Air in 2022. Cannot remember the subdivision where I first saw one divided. I got a phone call from a prominent real estate agent in the city of Wichita about doing this. I told him they shouldn't do it, couldn't do it. It was a, um, it would be a non-conforming lot. Spoke with Keith about it and Jackie Kelly at the time, then got to Ty, spoke with Ty about it. Ty told me kind of because of who it was to ignore it. Not a big deal. And now I'm here arguing to get this passed. So a little bit of irony, a little bit more history for you on this. I'll stand for questions. We, we do not intend on, as Paula said in your report tonight, there are some items that can be requested, but we do, we really question legality of, of requiring those from the city, which is one of the issues that I brought up with planning commission. If you had the staff reports from the two planning commissions, you would note, notice that the, the golden factors changed drastically. The golden factors changed between December 12th and today. And that's, I, I, this is the first I've heard of minimum lot sizes, widths, things like that. I haven't heard of any of this, so not that I'm unprepared, I was unprepared for that, um, but I'll answer any questions you may have.
Well, when this last case came up, our, uh, inspection department or somebody informed us that condos could not share utilities in the common wall.
That was incorrect.
Fireproof wall and that there was an exception made for that division because they were already built. And I didn't really agree with that, but we made the exception. So there is a difference as far as we know between the building codes for a condo and the building codes for duplex.
They're not. And if there are, then there are a thousand duplexes that are not in compliance with building code in the, in Cedric County. It is the same. There is a one hour firewall between two buildings as is specified in the building code. And I will mention that building code has nothing to do with zone.
Let's be clear about one thing though, um, we have Bel Air zoning rules. And I'm no expert on any of these, so I'm not going to tell you the, uh, what those rules say and what they don't say. But, but they are, they are different than they are in other cities. So we expect that our developers will follow those, those zoning rules.
Right. And as I stated, it wasn't a malicious thing. It was a, this is the way we've done it. Like Paula said, there are plenty of exo-urban small cities who are trying to catch up to this. You're going to have other developers in Bel Air who have done this, who have no desire whatsoever to come and try to fix the problem. You're going to have those, but you're not going to have it from our client. They contacted us immediately, we got in touch with the city, we're trying to fix this. And we have done nothing but had to kick further and further field goals as we've gone through this process. And what we feel, what we have provided from the beginning is sufficient for definition purposes and all of the above.
So are you then in agreement with the recommendations of the planning commission? With the, uh, the exceptions that they asked for?
So the planning commission recommended approval with adding, uh, an updated landscaping requirement, which I would be willing to do. Uh, restrictive covenants amendment to original developer's agreement, wall agreement, easement agreement. Those are things that, uh, we have no intention whatsoever of doing.
So you don't, you don't agree with the, with the recommendations of the planning commission either?
No.
Okay.
What, I guess what we're hoping for is, um, well, what I was hoping for was focusing on the golden factors that were really in our favor for the last two meetings. If I look at them, this one obviously isn't with added information on, on two of them that I'm not sure who with P E C talked about that. I do know golden factor number four, it would seem as though that was a negative, but, uh, the end, no detrimental impact to nearby properties is expected. Whether you have minimum lots, sizes, widths, that's got nothing to do with nearby properties. And then I'm not sure that revisions, clarifications, like I said, that's new to me. That's information that I'm just getting now. Once completed, no loss in value or hardship upon the applicant is anticipated. I've just never seen a planning commission approve something a certain way, just to have, I believe this could have been, uh, handled a little better, I guess, what I'm trying to say.
Well, I, I don't know what you mean by golden factors changing. The golden factors were established by the Kansas Supreme Court, they're not established by the city.
The golden factors that have been presented to you are not the same as the golden factors that were presented to the planning commission. That's what I mean has changed.
I can only go by the record that we have here.
In the minutes, I don't even know if they're in the minutes. I'll just tell you in the report, the, the golden factors that were given to the planning commission in November are different than the golden factors that were given to the planning commission in December. And they're different from the golden factors that are given to you tonight. So as I've gone through this, I've had to argue golden factors, three different sets of them. And that, that's, I'm just not sure how what the, um, I don't, I don't want to say legality of it, but as far as meetings go, while, while you're, you're getting separate information than what the planning commission had.
So like I said, the golden factors are not established by the city or planning commissioner established by the Kansas Supreme Court. What changes are you saying are changes in the golden factor?
Have you, did you read the golden factors in the staff report?
I have the staff report here, I think.
So.
I gotta find it, it's.
If you go through the golden factors, they're all the same, character of the neighborhood, zoning nearby, suitability, extent, all those are the same. The information provided by staff has changed in every single one that I have had a meeting on, is what I'm saying. You're reading different golden factors than the planning commission read less than a month ago. So the planning commission made their decision based off of golden factors that were presented to them and the golden factors that are presented to you are not the same.
Okay. I appreciate that, um, information, so we can talk about that.
And then as far as the recommendation and adding, adding a townhouse definition, we've done that in the state's definition, they're basically the same. I mean, I could change the words, I suppose, but it's the same thing. Like I said, what I had approved or got approved through planning commission had nothing to do with meeting, um, minimum lot widths, sizes. It seems like maybe P E C, if they've helped out in this, they've come to the park, to the party pretty late. And all, all we're wanting to do is benefit city developer, citizens that are wanting to purchase these duplexes. I know you get a lot of questions about rentals, you get a lot of questions about affordable housing. This is a perfect solution for both. Individuals can purchase homes for a lot less than your average single family house this way. And there are less rental properties. And the reason why they don't split them beforehand is, but like I said, some developer or some, individuals purchase a whole lot to rent out both sides. Some purchase to split and sell both sides, so that's why we don't know beforehand what we're going to do with a specific lot.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any more questions for Mr. Good?
I do have a comment on that as it applies to the golden factors. If we're not doing all the same type of development, if it's not all rentals or all owned properties, I think that would be detrimental to the neighborhood in this case. You, you don't know what you're moving in next to. I mean, it looks like all duplexes, but they're selling you one. And so do you think the whole neighborhood is owner occupied? Or do you think the whole neighborhood's rentals and?
I, I don't know that I would know that in any particular purchase.
You're going to rent, you're going to rent. If you're going to buy, you're going to buy.
Yeah, but I'm not going to buy right in the middle of a whole bunch of rentals if I know about them.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg.
So I had this question when we had a similar case back in November. When it comes to zoning cases, are, are we supposed to be considering, we're, we're talking about land use, not how they're going to be sold or rented, correct?
You, you are considering land use. And in order for communities, governments to be consistent, uh, the Kansas Supreme Court provided some golden factors for people to use. And that list is not exclusive. A governing body, a planning commission can consider other things for you that are unique to that community, to that development. But yes, both city staff and the applicant are accurate that the golden factors are used. But both have also mentioned that P E C has contributed information, information which appears to be new. That information can also be considered by the governing body or a planning commission. Applicants made the comment that this information has come in late. Based upon the timeline provided, I can understand what he's saying. But it is still information that can be considered by the governing body.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
My concern with the split lots is, um, how these are built. So is this a case where they have individual separate water lines, separate sewer lines, separate power and it goes to each side separately?
Yes.
So there's no, where they have to get an easement to look at the meter or anything like that?
No, and, and power meters, um, Evergy has used the explicit right to access power meters if needed. So even if they were on the same side, Evergy has the right to go without an easement. You can create private easements, but in this case they wouldn't be necessary. And they're on separate water, they're on separate sewer lines.
Okay, so they don't have that issue. The power then may or may not have to get access to the other guy's side if they need to do something with their meter, whatever reason. Okay.
Typically, the homeowner doesn't access the meter without consent of Evergy.
True.
And Evergy has that right to that meter.
Sure.
Without any type of easement. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that documentation, um, reflects what these customers, individuals that own this thing, um, have to deal with. I'm definitely aware of it because I've got one of my kids in a situation like that in Kansas City. So I'm very aware of some of the issues with sharing various things.
Right.
Um, and assuming like the air conditioning separated, which you're saying they are, which is good. Uh, so that's a help. Uh, so anytime there's commonality or anything that needs to be documented, at least I want the owners to be aware of what they're getting into. I want to make sure that's covered.
I understand that.
Okay, so that's kind of one of my concerns is when we do A, which is a duplex, and then switch it to B, which is two townhomes, set up, I just want to make sure that the customers, the users don't get caught in the crossfire. That's my concern.
And, and this is not a, a new phenomenon, like you said, your child, your child lives in a, in a shared area. Central Park fourth is a townhomes, they're all connected. They all are relatively copacetic, I'm sure, I'm, I would assume. And if not, it's civil matters. And that was, you know, one of the issues we had early with, with the wall agreement, wall easement and things like that, those aren't enforceable by the city. So I don't really see any point in doing it. Those are sit, like, if I have a shared wall and I hammer a nail through both walls, I don't call the mayor, I don't call Ted. I might call Ted, just say hi, but I would call my, just like a tree falling on your fence. It's a civil issue, you call the insurance company and that's the way it's resolved. It's not resolved through contracts and agreements that are arbitrary and just extra paperwork.
Right, I, I understand. But when you want to fix the shingles on your half, then the other guy does it? Or gal, then what do you do? So I've got red shingles on my half and I've got black shingles on the other half?
Yeah.
I mean, so those are the kind of issues.
That's a risk you take. I, I understand. And that, that, I would say that's a risk you take when you purchase one of these is that you may have disagreements with your neighbor, you may have disagreements with your neighbor 10 feet from you. Of course, you don't share anything, I understand, except for maybe a fence line. But in those situations, you know, that's. It's the duty of the the restrictive covenants, the HOA, it's not the duty of the city to be meddling or or. Over regulating. Um, what a developer or secret private citizens have and should be allowed to have.
Right, it's more of an awareness of the issue. Um, not necessarily regulating, but making it aware and making sure developers. Are sharing the information to their users to let them know, hey, they want to do something different on the roof or. If there's something that says they have to do the same thing.
Right.
You definitely want to have that documented.
Yeah.
And to let it just go and say, well, catch is catch can and too bad, so sad.
Right.
That is not acceptable.
And there are, there are restrictive covenants and there will be an HOA to mandate certain design criteria, I'm sure. Um, whether or not they, whether or not they follow it, I I, you know, that's another thing, but.
But those are the concerns is just how do we help the user not be, I mean, because it's great for the developer. I think that they can sell the split, build them one way and then change them into something else. Um, that's an advantage for developer, but is it a disadvantage to the customer? And we want to watch out for the customer as well as the developer, but I think we just want to make sure it's a balance.
I understand.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Jay, you brought up the uh requirements that the additional requirements that were asked for. So those are things that. May typically be put in to a developer's agreement if a developer is wanting to partner on certain things. The existing developer's agreement. What is your opinion of that and? And you brought up HOA and really the intent of having those in there is to make sure they pass on through covenants. It wasn't, it wasn't intended to be arbitrary, it was just uh. Recently done on an exact, almost an exact situation to try to resolve some of those things. So what are your thoughts on that? I know at the planning commission thing, you said we have no, we have no uh. We're not think, we're not going to do those.
Are you referring to recommendations now? Or the recommendations that the planning commission had?
I think, I think they're kind of similar. I think there was like three or four items that were requested.
The items that were requested from. The uh planning commission. Were uh. Restrictive covenants amendment to original developer's agreement, which the P U D is an updated developer's agreement.
Gotcha.
Um, as you said, in the that last item with the plat. There is a developer's agreement on this property and the P U D only adds to that developer's agreement. So this is. Uh, most P U Ds in the city of Bel Air are not done on plats, they're done through a developer's agreement. That's how it's been done. As far as I know.
That's correct.
And a wall agreement and the easement agreement were also recommendations of the planning commission, but. Um, again, those are just, there's civil issues. Uh, I don't think the developer's agreement really touches on them. But it's something that's not really enforceable by, I mean, I don't know how the city would enforce that.
Well, they would be enforceable by the HOA though.
They already are. I mean, they naturally, they would be enforced by this civil tort law, I mean, just by two neighbors. And by the HOA.
I guess I'm trying to.
But there is no HOA, is there today?
Uh, today, I don't know. I don't know if there will be one once it's all established or if there's the process of building it. I'm not sure.
When you refer to the P U D, are you referring to one that you have proposed or you referring to the one that was uh agreed to ten years ago, eleven years ago?
On this piece of property?
Yes.
There was a P U D eleven years ago?
Yes, filed in uh with Cedric County uh Register of Deeds.
There was a developer's agreement filed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm I'm.
Yes, thank you. So there was a developer's agreement, as is Bel Air customary. There is a developer's agreement that was filed in twenty fourteen.
Right.
And this P U D is an addition to that developer's agreement in a sense that this is how we're going to develop. Now, most of the in internal, the the um. The infrastructure that is involved in the developer's agreement and the. Uh, agreement between developer and city, that's all completed already. That's all, you know, water, sewer, all that's already there.
Yeah.
Um, the P U D, what I meant by that is the P U D is a document. That reads like a developer's agreement.
Yeah, I'm I'm, I know, I I misspoke about the P U D.
So this, so so the P U D that we've presented is. The the developer's agreement is actually, the language is in there. It's just a revised developer's agreement with what we, how we want to develop the property. But in short, we feel like what we've provided is um. Is sufficient for the P U D, for the zoning, for the development that we have. These buildings do meet building code. We've we've defined townhomes, we've done everything that Mr. Price asked and and Paula asked at the onset. Um, so we've. Of course, if I had my druthers, you'd go ahead and prove it now as is, but that's not. My call.
Are there any more questions or discussion with uh with the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Uh, so what is your feeling on replating?
So the replat of this would be very difficult because Chapel Landing is a gigantic plat. Uh, this second edition south of that is, they're all in the same plat. It would be. And it would also be difficult to replat, not knowing exactly what property lines are going to be there if we're allowed to develop this way. Um, I know that the current plat does state the zoning on it, which. You, in the Bristol Hollows case, you had that that plat didn't, so I mean. We could possibly vacate platters text to take that out. And maybe say that there's a P U D here. Um, but I don't know that that's necessary. Because then the other addition of Chapel Landing isn't in the P U D, that what's what's just south of of. That area.
Maria. Are they not able to replat just a portion like? But what I'm hearing there is they can't replat just the area in green. I think that's what Jay just said.
No, we we could. Do a complete and total replat.
Well, which areas are you developing in then, all of the green?
Just the green area and then south of that is a part of Chapel Landing. It's just.
Okay, but that my question then stands, can you replat the area in green without replating anything else?
Is that question familiar for?
For Maria.
And I think. Jay, Mr. Cook, what council member is, is this because you don't feel like you're legally able to? Or is this gonna be too time intensive, financial intensive?
Definitely could replat. The issue with the replat is basically cost. It's a very expensive venture to replat something when the P U D document. Has stood in Bel Air for as long as I can, as long as I know. But you know, it could definitely be replatted to answer your question legally and.
So they could also legally replat a portion of the green.
Yes, I thought that the only issues were time and financial. And it appears as though probably mainly it's a financial.
It's all financial.
All financial.
And I don't, it's not really replating to do a lot split, but it's it's registered the same way. So lot splits are given legal. Given legal. Shoot, can't think of the word. They're given a uh a legal definition of the area for each side of the of the lot.
So you could replat ten lots, develop them out and. And and I'm.
We would have to rezone.
Some difference in cost to doing an individual lot split ten times, I would think a replat of all ten would be. More efficient.
It's not. A replat for a lot split is a surveyor going out, doing a boundary survey and cutting it in half. It's not a, it's a less than a day venture. Replating would involve. Uh, a lot more. Lot more hands, lot more eyes, lot more.
I have trouble with that concept. I would think you would just resurvey the ten lots we're thinking about.
So the way, the way, does this, does this button, oops, that vibrates, okay. So if I took, if I took this lot, there the cursor's on right now, and let me do a square lot. This lot right here, this square lot right here. And I bought that lot and I decided, you know what? I don't want to rent those out. I want people to own them. I want to be able to sell two houses there instead of one. All I have to do in that scenario is get a survey crew out to survey the 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 original lot and then split it down the middle. And that's a much easier process because again. I may buy that one, you may buy the one to the east and you say, I want to rent them out. So we don't know which ones are going to be split, which ones aren't, is the purpose of the P U D.
So you're not wanting to develop all the block of lots at a time, you want to sell the lots off separately.
That's, yeah, I mean, I typically. Well, not typically, the way this developer does it is you build a house and you sell it. And then the person that purchases it can keep it, rent both sides. They can split it, sell both sides. It's kind of a matter of what they want to do.
Well, I would, I would think to be able to even meet the guidelines. You would have to have that survey done before you started building, so you could make sure you put that center wall in the right place. If you come back and do it later, you may not meet the minimum requirements for side lots.
Uh, you meet, we meet this, you would meet the minimum requirements for side lots because they're already met. I mean, you already have to, we, there's already an R four, there's a side setback on the on the outside. That there's a side setback there and there's a side setback there. You're already meeting those. It's just the middle lot line is what we're requesting in the P U D.
I'm struggling with this one because the timing does have have something to do with this, with you starting in August or September and. I know everybody in the room is thinking about the other case where we did this lot split. And that timing of that happened differently than the timing of this and. It feels like some of these changes that you reference are probably a result of that, the other case. The the things that are being considered with this slot split that we haven't dealt with in Bel Air. Until just recently, as you know, so that's the, that's the struggle here and hopefully you appreciate that.
Well, I definitely do. I definitely get it.
That's what we're all up here.
Yeah.
Wrapping our brain on.
Just for you to understand timeline. Bristol Hollows was all one owner. We had twenty. So I submitted the application to Keith and to Paula and then realized I needed to get twenty more signatures. So that took a, that took some time and some explaining to these property owners, hey, we have to change your zoning of this house you just bought. So we had some questions and we even had at the first meeting, we had an individual who had a question about this process. They're just ignorant to the process, not really had an issue, but. Um, that's why we're kind of late to the game, but I definitely appreciate what. You know, that this is new and this is uncharted territory. I just think that. From a planner's side, this might be overkill. And it might be a lot easier than you're making.
Okay.
And I mean that with utmost respect. I don't, that sounded very crass, but I didn't mean for that to sound crass.
Well, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around what this is, what you're proposing to do here versus what is being requested of you. And it's, I. I'm wondering if it's appropriate and and I'm going to ask you for your guidance on this. Uh, if we could have a a discussion to staff, just I guess myself and and staff. To try to figure out all these moving pieces here. Uh, so that we have a better information about what we're talking about here. And maybe, maybe just table this thing until we can have that discussion. I'm not, because I'm not sure it needs to go back to the planning commission. I'm not sure, it doesn't need to go back to planning commission. I just don't know where where, in my mind, I don't know where it should go. Um, and we're going to spend a lot of time here going around circles and not getting anywhere and I'm, I don't want to do that.
I do believe that, and this is definitely a Maria question, but. If the requests in your packet being putting a minimum lot width and all that stuff. I'm not sure planning commission has to see that again. I mean, I guess you could. Table that. I would prefer you table it because I'm kind of jaded on meetings. But I don't think it has to, I know the recommendation is to go back, but I think that. You know, if we can agree to provide some information, I don't know that it has to. I don't know, that's probably.
Well, I'm trying to, trying to get a better understanding of what you're proposing versus what has been discussed with staff.
Yeah.
I don't, um, it's not clicking to me and I don't feel that it's clicking for the rest of this, for the city council.
I think the difference.
Okay.
I don't know why I keep zipping this up, but the main difference in what we're proposing and what. Staff's recommendation, at least today's staff recommendations. Is we've defined townhouse based off of state statute, not off of Bel Air zoning code. Which that, I mean, that could be an easy fix. I could do that easily. That's what has to be. We, in the P U D, we don't have minimum lot widths and we don't have minimum lot area.
Okay.
The recommendation of staff is to put those in there. One of the issues we have is, I mean, I could guess a minimum lot area, some. As you can see, some of those are in cul-de-sacs. I don't know what the square footage would be of some of those being split. Um, says removal of sections one through five, that's basically to put in the information that staff is stating with lot widths, lot. Uh, lot area heights, things like that.
Well, I.
So we have language that we think is sufficient, I guess, and. Staff is requesting different language is the major thing, but.
If I may, Mayor Benage. Tonight, the governing body has three options per statute. Uh, the reason there are three options is to keep these cases moving forward for all parties, especially the developer. If this case were to be sent back to the planning commission. For consideration of the additional information, I've made notes of multiple things that have been discussed. Such as discussions with staff, whether this information was provided to the planning commission. Uh, applicant has said he has relied on specific information. I don't know if that information has been known or made clear to the governing body. About the applicant being willing to change some of the platter's text at the podium. That information is new and was not provided to the planning commission. P E C information, which has been provided, that information has not been provided to the planning commission. It sounds as though from at least three different council members that there are questions and concerns about golden factors that have been made known. By the applicant, why there are changes, where do those come from? Based upon all of that information, if the governing. Based upon all of that information, if the governing body chooses to send back to the planning commission and then it comes back again, council, the governing body no longer has three options, but you then have four. That fourth option is you could override the planning commission and modify. That is something that could work to the favor of either party. Perhaps to the applicant who wants something else to be taken into account by the governing body, or if governing body wants to take into account something that was not discussed by the planning commission. When I look at my calendar, it isn't something that would prolong this indefinitely. In fact, it would be to the next date of, it could be February thirteenth, which would give an opportunity for applicant and staff to meet and discuss all of that information and to have a golden factors and a staff report that is not going to surprise applicant as he has stated at the podium tonight. But three options tonight, I would ask that the governing body choose one of those. And I wanted to explain the rationale behind a fourth option once.
So you're not saying tabling is an option really? Okay.
Not per the statute.
Okay. Well, we got to follow the statute. We don't, we, we don't get to make those. So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just could, Paula, could you just say one more time? That was essentially what Maria said was what, why you wanted to go back to planning commission, just so everything was in writing and clear.
That, that is exactly right. Um, I, when it left planning commission, um, I felt that it needed a further analysis and a better explanation and a better review. So when it got to here, that's why my recommendation was to return it to the planning commission so that we could work with Jay, finalize whatever we need to do with the PUD agreement, not necessarily require him to plat, but make sure that the elements were clear to us and, and to you. Um, and then that way, as Mayor said, you'd be very clear about what you are and aren't approving and what, what he's asking for, what we recommended, that we could come to an agreement ahead of time. I don't think that opportunity was pursued previously and I wanted to make sure that it was. And as far as the motions, Maria asked, answered that related to what can, what can be done tonight?
If we go with item three, though, we need to say what it is we want the planning commission to reconsider, right?
And that's part of the problem. I don't, I don't have enough. I don't feel like I got enough information to actually make that statement.
General statement of what is to be considered. Discussions with staff, discussions between staff and the applicant to discuss the discussions that was mentioned by the applicant. What can be done regarding updating the platter's text? How the changes in the golden factors hit me on December twelfth and today, how those can be reconciled with the applicant. I'm just saying a few things that I've heard council say tonight.
Yeah, there's a whole plethora of things there and put all that in a motion is like, okay, what did she said? I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I, I did have one last question. I'm trying to think back to our November meeting. I know we're not, I don't want to always refer to that similar case, but this is a similar case. And I had voted to approve it that night. I'm trying to recall, we'd sort of come to a consensus that they, they were like, okay, we're willing to work with this. With this developer sort of taking the opposite position, saying you're, you're asking for more than is perhaps required. Can you comment on that?
One of the things that the applicant has mentioned is regarding the restrictive covenants and not feeling that is necessary. When it comes to the other case, which again, I'm not telling council that they should follow along with what occurred in another case. I'm just mentioning this with Bristol Hollows. That specific case is, and it, there was an agreement to one street tree on that lot. As a result, there was an agreement to update the restrictive covenants to show one street tree. That was the only addition that was made to the restrictive covenants. HOAs can, with a majority vote, change their HOA restrictions. As a result, the developer also agreed to update in the developer's agreement, one street tree per lot, because that HOA is not going to be able to change anything in that developer's agreement. The reason the developer's agreement was chosen to be amended was because the parties knew that the original development, development agreement was filed with the Cedric County Register of Deeds. Wanted to follow similar suit with an amendment to the developer's agreement and file it with the Cedric Regis, Cedric County Register of Deeds. And regards, regards to the wall agreement, there was no intention by those parties to make something that was going to be enforceable, especially the city of Bel Air. But it was more of a notification to all parties of what was occurring with this wall, what the diagram of the wall was created by that specific developer. So that the individuals who took possession of that structure had that notice and whether they wanted to take use that agreement. As far as the applicant also mentioning about the utility easement, that was something that was proffered, offered by the applicant's representative. And what that really came down to is exactly what the applicant mentioned today. Was giving the parties notice that Evergy is going to be the owner of that power meter. That Evergy is going to have any type of interest in getting to it whenever they want. If an individual lives on a side of the structure where that power meter is not, that they can and should call Evergy, tell them that they want to access their power meter and how they can get access, including that if they are not able, if they don't want to continue to contact Evergy to get access, they can actually pay a fee to have that power meter um, moved so that they would have access to it immediately. But again, there was nothing saying that it needed to be enforced. It was a notice, a notice regarding who has access and who has the ownership of that meter box. So those are all things that, nothing that this governing body put upon anyone as far as regulation itself. But instead it was an agreement from the developer to give as much information as possible to all parties. And in the end, it turned out to be much more notice and education, just as the applicant had mentioned. It's just providing notice to everyone.
I don't see anybody from public here to, uh, ask for public comments, so, uh, this is really the, uh, we're ready for the council to make a decision as to which way they want to go and, and if any additional discussion is needed, then this is an opportunity to do that. But as I understand this right now, we do have non-conforming to the code, uh, to the, uh, the zoning currently and, uh, the applicant has, uh, attempted to come up with a, what he considers a, uh, an accommodation to bring it into, uh, requirements of the, of the zoning. And my, just my personal feeling, I don't, I don't have my arm. I haven't been able to get my head around it and understand it, so, uh, but it's not just my decision, it's, it's the council's decision as well, so.
Maria, a question for you. So we do have three options. One of them is to disapprove the request. What does that look like if we do that? Does the process start all over for the applicant and what kind of impact does? Just give us some background and highlights of what that looks like.
It would involve overriding the planning commission's recommendation. The governing body would need to explain why using the golden factors or what other factors are being relied upon. That would need to be clear in the record. Then if it is disproved, the applicant would need to start over with a new application. Which would include a filing fee to start over.
Thanks. Just why I asked that is I don't know what it accomplishes, but I wanted to know what the process of redoing it would look like and how that may fix some of this and how that may differ from us just sending it back to planning commission.
Well, my, my personal feeling right now is I'm not sure that we have something we couldn't approve. I just don't understand it well enough to say, yeah, I could approve that. And I don't know what that discussion looked like. So that's why I wanted to maybe have some discussion with staff, but this just, that's too much of a discussion to, to take from this body right now. And, and so that's, that's why I was suggesting a tabling, but, but I understand that's not allowed in statute, so we can't do that. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm willing to listen to any ideas, right?
Motion to return the finding of the fact and recommendation of the planning commission for PUD dash two four dash zero four to the planning commission for further consideration, consideration of the statement specifying the basement basis. The failure to approve or disapprove, the statement is, it needs further discussion with city staff. Need to review the golden factors and make sure all parties agree to what's listed. And address individual lot requirements such as trees and sizing.
Okay. And that's, I'm not going to try to repeat all that because I'm not sure I got it all. But, uh, we have a motion to return this to planning commission with, I believe was four issues to be, to, um, to be considered. And, uh, from Mr. Welch, but do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Schmidt. And we can certainly have more discussion. And it says here a simple majority of four votes is required. Being as Mr. David is not here, still needs four votes, but I vote, right? Okay, okay. And does that need to be roll call? Okay, very good. Any further discussion?
So John, quick question. Your motion doesn't address any of the previous requirements that the applicant has said they will not entertain. Is it, was that your intent?
Uh, I can't remember what those were, uh, the covenants, I guess was one of them. What else was there?
Is your mic on?
It's not.
Okay.
Sorry.
I don't know. I just, the reason why I asked that is to give the planning commission direction to re-review those and just get like, let them have that as a part of their discussion. I don't know if that's necessary, Maria, but that felt like an item that previously the planning commission had discussed. I don't know if it would be included or not be included. Would we direct that or not?
I don't know. Would that be covered by the discussion with the staff?
I mean, the original motion, um, Councilmember Welch does call for the discussions with staff to make sure that everyone is understanding that they're, that they have the same understanding of the golden factors, that everyone understands where we are.
Probably covers it. Well, I kind of left the broad topic in my thinking to further discuss with city staff as an item by itself.
Right. That's why I understood your statement, yes.
So that you could cover anything that, as you remembered or whatever, that you need to hash out. And then to review the golden factors listed and, and agree on that list. So that, because I do see where it's changed a little bit, but I don't think it's changed drastically. And maybe I'm misreading that, but I, I I just want everybody to agree on the same thing. And then to, uh, the individual lot requirements, because there were several things to do with the lots that. I mean, and that could include.
Your intent would there be more specific, not so general?
Right.
Is kind of what I was hearing when we were talking about it. Because there's two sides. They're general. They don't want to number on it and we have already a number. And there's probably a, some sort of a discussion of where's the middle ground on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have a number, but, uh, you know, I'm, like I said, I am not against condos. I just want to see them done properly.
Mr. Mayor. I know we're not going to have a big discussion here, but what, just a little further, are you, is, is it the consensus of this body that we're not going to be happy until there are covenants attached to the property so that, that new owners will have the same and firewall requirements? Or basically looking for kind of what we required or what the prior similar case agreed to?
That's what I'm hoping for, something similar, help the user. And this seems like pretty much kind of seat of your pants kind of a setup. Where we just say, we're just going to do it this way and you guys take care of it and then you're on your own. And then they call the city and say, I've got this issue and had issues with this and that and the other thing. I don't want that. So, and until we get to that with this kind of a setup, I don't like it. I don't think, uh, if I was a buyer, I would either.
Paula, do you have something you want to offer? I'm not sure you're allowed in this discussion, but you can always ask her.
I was making myself available in case there were any other questions.
As a council member, you may ask her to come in and ask her a question.
Well, that's why I asked if she had something she wanted to say. It's like.
I guess what I'm getting at, and the reason why I asked that question after the motion before we vote, is if we're sending this back to planning commission, when it comes back, I want it solved. I want, I want it to be vetted and I want everybody to get what they believe we would agree to. And instead of in a month, Jay's back here and the applicant's back here and they're upset and we don't have any answer. We're nowhere, nowhere closer. So I think staff understands where we're trying to head, but there's a lot of gray area in there, it seems to me. Yeah. And so I appreciate the, I think that's a direct way of addressing that gray area is, how did we solve this problem previously? And maybe that makes the most sense. I don't know.
So one last thing before we vote, I, I was the only one, I think, well, I think you voted to not send it back to planning commission, but for opposite reasons. I would have approved it that night with that prior case. And I talked to Maria later, later about, you know, are we, are we inserting ourselves on an insurance issue or, you know, a gas company that knows how to deal with these things? Maria, can you, I briefly spoke to you after that case. Can you, can you talk about that from the city's liability standpoint? If we approve this tonight and then owners aren't happy with how their HOA turns out or how their agreements are written down the road when that's solidified, what is the city on the hook or could be liable when there's a dispute? That I would view as more of an insurance issue or more of an HOA issue, but the city could somehow be drug in?
In this specific case, I, I really don't want to answer that. And the reason why is I don't even know how many lots this involves. I don't even know how many structures have been built. I don't know how many structures are mid-construction. I don't know how many lots have zero construction. I, I don't have any of that information. I don't know if any of the houses have two power boxes on the same side. Or if we absolutely know that there's no issues of pipes going across the sides regarding water or sewer. That's where I just don't know that and I'd be making it up. So what I can do is I can get that information so that I can respond and get an, an answer. I, I knew more the last time around, but I don't know that right now.
All right. Well, I, I tried to find every which way to support approving this tonight, but I think I'm on board with, we just need to talk more and get it in writing better.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. It's a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Come to the mic so I don't have to shout at you. Mr. Greg David, who is absent, Mr. Tyler Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Aye.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Aye.
Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero. And the motion carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. So we do need to have an executive session and I had suggested, I'm suggesting 10 minutes unless council members think otherwise. And I'll entertain a motion.
All motion to recess into executive session to discuss the city attorney's performance review. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine B one to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 10:20.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Executive session for 15 minutes. We, then we'll call meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken, so we're ready to move on to discussions and future issues. So, um, next week we have the city council workshop scheduled for 14th at 7:00 PM. Do we have any, um, issues we want to put on the agenda for that? I know Ted always, always has some things.
I've got a list here. So as you know, we've been working with, uh, two five nine, U S C two five nine and been asking for a few months, and I finally got a call today that said they want to come present their master facility plan to our city council. I gave, gave them an option, uh, for next week or the 21st. So I just put that on as a kind of a filler. So I'll get with them and hopefully that if they say next week, then we'll have them first up. Item B for next week's workshop, um, we kind of touched on it earlier this meeting, GIS. I know we've talked a lot about ERP systems and, um, all the different data type technology upgrades we've made, but we've done substantial strides in the GIS field of our city. I want to do a quick presentation on that and show you our capabilities. Camping and poke, uh, property without a permit. I think Maria touched on that with her. We might look at that at, at the workshop. 2025 legislative priorities. We send a letter every year to our elected officials in the state house. We would like to discuss that a little bit. And then I asked Nick, um, our communications, um, to look at, uh, kind of what his communication strategies with our citizens are. He'll give a brief presentation about that. I know I've been saying for a few months now, we're going to do comp plan in January, but it's going to be pushed to February. It'll be a joint session with the planning commission and we'll knock that out. The PEC needed a little more time, so I, I, I think I, we can accommodate that. And plan for 2025 is to kind of keep you guys, uh, understanding of the schedule. And then March workshop, I have CIP and do a lot of priority based workshop in March, which will lead into, uh, budget, uh, as we go.
So you want to cover all those.
That's a lot, I know.
Next week?
Yeah, so item A, that's a maybe. And then, uh, Yeah, so item A, that's a maybe, and then B, C, D, and E would be my recommendation to cover.
I, I actually think that because of some late issues have come up, I think C needs to have a high priority.
Yeah, that's, that kind of, that got added, and I, I think we'll, we'll be discussing that in the workshop and then maybe acting on the 21st, if not first in February.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have other issues they want to bring in? I think we've got plenty there. Okay. Very good. I'm glad. All right. So we'll move on to this Central County Shared Roads discussion. I met with Mr. Pete Meisner, County Commissioner, who represents Bel Air and other points east, and also with Mr. Packer, who, Lynn Packer, who was, who presented here at the city council here a couple of months ago. So it was a cordial meeting. It wasn't like they're all against a, a shared road agreement type of thing. They didn't, Pete had no idea if, if rest of these county commission would agree to such a thing. He said if we wanted to propose one, to, to draft one up, send it to him, and he'll see what they can do. Mr. Packers did say that one of the downside of such agreement is that Bel, that Bel Air was not get as much benefit of that agreement from frontage road percentages. So he pointed out the agreement that he gave us on 53rd Street, and it would have resulted in less funding. And there's probably some truth to that. My concern with that is, and they actually brought it up, which was kind of funny to me, was that you never know what the next people on this county commission will say or do. Okay? And they used an example of a couple of gentlemen that were on the Central County Commission that were voted out about eight years ago. And they had a completely different perspective on shared roads, and, and they weren't going to pay for anything, for anybody. Whereas, whereas the current people are willing to, at least the current people as of last year, because they've got two new ones coming in. I don't know what their perspective is. I think they'll probably be fine people because, but I just don't know. The current ones are willing to work with, with cities on these things. You know, and Mr. Packer also saying having 20 different agreements in 20 communities would be confusing to manage. I, I don't know that's an issue for us. I think we could be the boilerplate that they could go from, but I don't know. But that's just, I want to make sure we, we are fair about what we're discussing here, so that's why I'm bringing it up. And he pointed out that multiple islands in Wichita where homeowners and developers have not asked Wichita to annex. And Bill, the Bella didn't have anything like that. We've eliminated all those islands. But we'd never had any large parcels that we didn't, that have not been, that the owners have requested that we not annex or try to avoid us annexing them. So we haven't, that's just not an issue for us. I did point out that we have 4.9 more miles of road that is shared with Central County Township on one side of the roadway. So I provided three bullet points to consider. We create a list of those shared roads. And this is just things for a contract. In February of each year, we would intend to do maintenance. In February of the year before the year we intend to do maintenance, we would advise the county of those, those proposed maintenance as, with estimated cost. And then the entity knows how much to allow in their budget for those costs. Because you go through the budget cycles, county structure, budget cycle 2026, next month. Okay? So that's why you throw this in here now for next month, so they know, okay, that's what, what we're looking at. If, and this is just bullet points for an agreement. And then in the year of the maintenance, and then we, we send them a bill for the maintenance when it's done. And it keeps it simple and otherwise moving forward, doesn't matter in my mind who actually owns the road, just as long as we're being fair about the shared maintenance. So I, I don't see it as a, a big issue there. And I, and I did tell them I appreciate their helping us with the big ticket items, but it's, it's this stuff that, that happens to us all the time that we just don't know about. We just spent a million dollars, almost a million dollars on Oliver, and we got no, no shared cost from City Wichita on that. You know, and I don't want us to get into that kind of a thing, and I, I want us to make sure we're moving forward. So anyway, that was basically the, the thrust of the meeting. Like I said, they weren't enthralled about the idea, but, but Pete Meisner said he would circulate it if we want to put a, put a contract force. So I said, well, I'd bring it to the city council, let you, let us know what you want to do, and, and we can go from there. So that's pretty much all I got to say about it. And this is not something we have to vote on. It's just, you know, do we want to give Maria the direction to draft a contract? Or do we want to say, oh, let's just drop this and go approve the annexations? Or how do we want to move forward?
More consensus type of thing. Maria, before we start discussion, can you remind us legally, does this even matter? It was, is my direct question. If, if we do this and they refuse, if we're going to be annexing the road, it's already happened, right?
The statute does not require the county to agree to any type of a cost share agreement.
Right.
They've already completed their resolution.
So it won't hurt to do it?
They, if, there's no, there's no timeline in the statute as to when we do our boundary resolution. But Central County does want it to get done. Of course, as I have shared with council, they could proceed to a suit if necessary, some type of a, and there is no statutory exception for us not to follow through. For Bel Air not to.
But legally, it wouldn't hurt for us to present them with something that can decide against it if they want. It's still going to take effect.
I think it would be good to have a, some kind of agreement. It only seems fair that people on both sides of the road pay for it.
I agree. And ideally, it looks like we might be already on the more than half, where we've got Central County on one side and us on the other, and we are, we've already annexed some of that. I don't know who did it prior. So we may be, if you say there's five miles, whatever the number is that's shared some way, and let's say 50% of it, or 54% of it, or 55, whatever is Bel Air taking care of it, then I would say we're good. And it should be 50/50. It shouldn't be 55, 45. It should be even. I think that's what anybody would expect. If they don't want to live up to their side of it, I think it should be obvious that they're not. And we shouldn't just go ahead and accept paying for all of that. If I was a, which I am a citizen of Bel Air, I sure don't think we should. I mean, typically, that's the way anybody does it. You split it evenly. And if they don't want to hold up their end of the bargain, at least it's known they're not holding up their end. And we do the best we can. But we're no worse off than we are anyway.
21st meeting?
I, if it works, I don't know that it has, it's the top priority for you.
It's not a rush.
Yeah. It's, it's an important issue, but it's not a top priority. I think you've got a couple of other things that you need to make sure you address.
I'm going to, I'm going to step in and tell Maria you don't have time.
I don't want it to linger on six months either, right? So, but yeah, do, do it as you, as you can work it in.
So I think, thinking about it that way, and deployment of resources, it seems like a long shot that the county is going to agree to that. And that's just my opinion, but it feels, feels like a long shot. So I don't know if Ted, with your comment of Maria doesn't have time, and I would tend to agree, she's got other things. I don't know, should we do it just for the token sake, or should we? Like, I don't know. I'm starting to go the other way on this now, thinking about time.
I, I think we should attempt it, and we're, we're not in a rush because we don't have to annex that road in any timeframe we know.
Yeah.
And it's better to try than not try.
Yeah, nothing ventured, nothing gained, right? So there you go.
Mayor, Mayor Benaj, from your meeting, did you, I'm always looking at the relationship wise. Do you think any of this would negatively, negatively impact our relationship with the county?
I didn't get that impression.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure, because that's the other aspect of this discussion.
I didn't get that impression. I think that they were, like I said, they weren't enthralled about the, about the concept, but they weren't just saying, don't, don't you dare, we're not, we're not going to consider anything. Okay? All right. Well, if there's nothing else.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Have we heard anything more on when Oliver will be open in Ketchikan?
Oh, that's a long project.
I will check back in with Matt. I, I know in a weekly update, I, he said Aprilish. So I haven't heard since that update, but I can certainly reach back out to their city administrator and ask if they have an updated timeline.
And we're expecting something soon on the stop signs on 53rd, right?
It's, it's supposed to be delivered on Monday. I don't know how the snow impacted that delivery. I'm hoping if it was, or if it gets delivered tomorrow, it should take more than a day to set up.
Are you putting it in a four-way stop there at 53rd and Wood?
No, just blinking lights.
Just blinking lights on 53rd?
Yep, just like we have on 53rd and Rock.
Well, I think.
I don't think we can do it four-way without.
No, without traffic study.
State engineer.
Well, we've already had that engineering study done. So that, that one, and, and you had mentioned a few weeks ago, and I, and I was thinking about it at the time, but that one and Oliver and 53rd were both studied within the last five years by transits, right? And that's where that roundabout came from. It was transit that put it in there. It's the recommendation for that intersection.
That was at Rock and 53rd.
Rock and 53rd, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. But anyway, okay. All right. So we're ready to move on to adjournment?
I am.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion from, who's second? Mr. Dean? A motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. All fair, say aye.
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 Opposed, you can stick around, but we're leaving. The motion carries four to zero.